Yeah.
I like to follow this meeting to order.
Please, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have a long call, please.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bunnock?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
Here.
Commissioner Alguire?
Is here.
Oh, there she is. Commissioner Outner?
Present.
Thank you. Members, descend to public comment. Is there any public comment? It's being done. Then we'll move on to our discussion items. And the first one would be the register of deeds. It would be on your booklet. It would be on page 99.
I do have updated numbers, too. I sent them to Laura. I don't know.
She emailed them late yesterday afternoon. So I'm not sure who they want. Got a chance, someone could.
All right. Sure. Yes, she did send these out.
Okay.
We'll get our now.
Just recycle them, I guess, if you do have. So there's a couple of things on there. One is the reinstatement of the halftime employee. And the other thing is the automation. I don't know what you want to go over first. Okay. Let's do the automation one. That one's probably the easiest at this point. There is a bid in that packet that I had gotten after I submitted the budget. And it did come in about $800 lower. So that one, the line item, the automation fund, 256-00000-801.000 can be reduced by $800. And the quote does say that it expires in October. I did talk to her. And she's, I told her it'd probably be the first of the year after the budget's approved that we would do this. And she said that the quote would still be good through the first of the year. And what this will allow is for our grantor and grantee index that are currently only searchable in the vaults, they will be put online. And you'll be able to search them online. And this will eliminate some of the traffic into our office. Currently, we can only have one person in the office at a time. So people are having to make appointments to come in and search. And some searchers could be there all day. This will help eliminate some of that. They'll be able to go in and search grantor grantee index. So that's what that is. I also put a synopsis in there of what the automation fund is and what it's for, if anybody has questions on that. And are there any questions that I can answer?
Well, I just was wondering about the reoccurring fee. That would just be a yearly fee of $675.
That's what I understand, yes. To maintain that module that's put in there in addition to what we already have.
Okay. Does it update the material then, you know?
What this is, is, I know, like, if you come into our office, you see the grantor grantee indexes. I don't know if anybody's, I know Gwen's been in there. Thank you for coming in. There, it's like a page by page. So if you, if you say you want to search branch, you go to the GR and it tells you what page to go to. So this module will, you'll click on the GR and that module will take you to that page. These indexes, I think, stopped in the 90s. And so what we do now is we index them daily. And so you can go in and search by name. It's really hard to explain without showing it. But the indexes that are going to be put in there are not going to be updated. Those will be searchable. But we index daily going forward. But these are indexes from the 90s and back to 1865 that will be searchable online. Does that make sense?
I guess that is. But that's not, I guess, maybe I didn't phrase the question right. When the reoccurring fee, is that to update the program that you're using?
Yes.
Is that the purpose of it? Or is it just for the many maintenance if it has to happen?
It's in maintenance. And in addition to, like, they currently, every year, we have a reoccurring fee for the software that we already use online. So it'll be in addition to that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Jen, my only question was to confirm what, obviously, that these charges come out of the automation fund dollars.
Yes.
Not the general fund.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Anything else on that?
It was really fascinating seeing the record.
Thank you for coming in.
I do have one more question on that.
Yes.
How does that change the efficiencies in the office?
It will decrease the traffic that comes into the office. Like I said, currently, we have to have, we're doing appointments because we only have one, one person in the office at a time. So we're currently doing appointments. It'll reduce that traffic so people can view these online and eliminate them having to come in and search the books manually. It'll be online.
Are other counties doing this? So we're kind of.
Yeah. And I've actually, I've had a few title searchers ask me when this was going to be done because other counties do have it on there. It makes it easier for them.
It sure would facilitate that, especially title searches and sales and for people who can't come in.
Yeah. And, you know, I, we're booked already into the middle of next week for people to come in and search. So we have people calling and they're like, we can't get there till Thursday. I've got to rush. It's got to be done. This will hopefully help eliminate some of that. But we do the best we can to accommodate everybody. I had a surveyor in Northport yesterday. And he's like, I'm coming from Northport. Is there any way you can just pull the village map for me? I can look at it and then bring it into the hall to me? I'm like, yes, we can do that. We have someone in here, but we can do that for you, you know? So we do the best we can to accommodate everybody. But, but when they're there all day, it makes it tough to, they got, we're doing all searches all day long. So.
Will you display to me on your document counts?
Yeah.
What is that? Is that a transaction?
Those are just the number of documents that get recorded. We have several instruments that, you've got your mortgages, your deeds, your discharges, your, your liens, your, everything that gets recorded in our office. That is just account of what gets recorded. That does not include the things that come into our office that are not recordable, that we have to do a return on. These are just the documents that have been recorded.
How much time does it take to record one?
Well, we have some documents that come in and they're a one-page discharge of mortgage. We had a document a couple of weeks ago that came in that was 620-page supplemental indenture. So obviously, your one page is going to take less than your, your 620-page supplemental indenture. There's a list of statutes that the state tells us we have to follow. You know, it has to have the top margins, the drafted by. We have to check all the notary stuff. Names under signatures match in the acknowledgement. We have to go through each document to make sure that it complies with the, what the state tells us it has to. So if you have a single-page discharge of mortgage, that will not take as long as that 620 page if there's several, several signatures. So it varies per document, depending on what it is.
I mean, right now, we're in the housing boom or sales.
Mm-hmm.
And then do these numbers change if the housing tapers up?
It, it can change. You can see, that's why I put, like, the last four years there. You can see how it's gone up. It, it does fluctuate. It goes up and down. And that's something we don't have control over.
Yeah.
We, you know, we, we've all seen how it goes up and down. And that's the market and.
And then you double-check all that, don't you?
Yeah. We really have to have, I, part of our office procedure is to have two sets of eyes on those documents. There's a lot of double-checking and double-checking to make sure that it's done correctly. And we are all human and sometimes things get missed. And so it's good to have an extra set of eyes to make sure it's done correctly.
Now, when you were talking about the software program, is that where you can go online from anywhere? Or do you, like, like Grand Traverse, you go in, they got that one room where?
We have a computer in our office that you can search on, or you can go online from anywhere.
Okay.
The disposition, it was cut back in 2019 during the budget process. Then we went into 2020 and we had the pandemic and kind of no, no, not asking for anybody, no hiring. I really wish we would have this person the end of last year because the way things have ramped up, it has, we've really, it's been busy. It's been tough with the scheduling of vacations and having, make sure we have at least two people in the office. We ran into a couple of emergencies where we've had someone on vacation. There was a death in the family. There was an emergency surgery. And thank goodness, the person that was on vacation, they were in the area and they were able to come in off their vacation to make sure that we had enough people in the office. So that has made it a little bit more difficult. And obviously, with the increase in the volume of documents that have come into our office, that has, we're doing everything we can to make sure that those stay up to date. We've fallen a little bit behind in some of the other things, like the filming of the documents, making sure that we've, and I've had some people coming in with a little bit of overtime. I hate to ask them to do that because they've got other commitments in their life to ask them to come in for an extra day or to stay late. I know that there was a, you had a question, I know Mr. Bunnock had a question in one of the invoices on Tuesday from Graphic Sciences. And the reason there were two is because we fell a little bit behind. So when we got, what I like to do is when we get to 5,000 images, I like to film them at the 5,000 mark. Well, we fell a little bit behind because we were trying to keep up on the daily stuff that we actually got to 10,000 images. So we had to do two, two batches is why there were two bills that were back-to-back like that. So just.
Well, I was surprised that they're microfilming them. I thought they were digitized though.
We do have them digital. They are permanent records, so they have to be permanent. I do still film them. I want to still film them. Because if something crashes and we need to get to those images, we keep a copy down in underground in Grand Rapids, and then we do keep a copy here. But if something happens with the digital world and we need to rebuild these, we need to make sure we can get to those images.
So do you digitize them besides, or are you just microfilm?
Just microfilm them. What, we scan them in daily. So that's where they're digital. That's where they come in, the digital. And that's what the people see online. But if something were to happen there and those crash, they need to get, we need to have those images.
The signatures, things like that, too? Will it show signatures? Do, will these signatures, it'll show the whole document?
Yeah. It shows the whole document. We had an instance just a couple of weeks ago where there was an error on an instrument. And that was digital. And it was missing a page. Well, unfortunately, back in the 90s, it got filmed that way, so we're missing a page. But there's nothing we can do to fix that. But going forward, you know, we, I had pulled that film to see what was there and see if I could get to it. But that, so I will continue to film and make sure we have copies down in Grand Rapids and underground in case something happens. We don't know. I, so.
I mean, I was, I mean, I don't know about the overtime. It doesn't look like it's that excessive, I mean, for overtime.
We try not to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I mean, I guess that, that would be the only thing that I would look at at this, is that, you know, we're not, you're not doing that excessively. If it isn't an issue for.
And, you know, like I said, the scheduling of, and being on top of getting, getting the work done, you know? Four was kind of the magic number. That four person full-time was kind of our magic number. And we, and it, and it worked for years and years and years and years. And then, you know, we lost a halftime person and you, we're starting to really kind of pull a little bit in the office and trying to make things work.
And in your office, accuracy is so important. We can't, you know, we, if we make a mistake in what she does, it has huge ramifications. So I'm, you know, it's good that you tried functioning with three and a half and you found out, okay, there's a reason we have four.
Yeah.
Because our, our work is better, our work for the public is better.
And, you know, another thing, too, is safety for our employees. We don't want one person left in the office. We don't know who's going to come through that door. And if there's something that doesn't meet that state requirement and we're the guy who's telling them, we can't record this, some people get pretty upset. And I think it's important you have at least two people in the office at all times. I mean, right now, we're, you know, there's some days we have to leave someone alone while someone's on lunch hour for a period of time, but not all day. We can't leave someone in there all day if there's an emergency or, you know, someone else can't be there. It, it makes it tough. So it's kind of a safety thing, too.
Have you ever had to push the panic button?
No, I, we have not had to push the panic button. I know we've had to deal with, there were some things in the treasurer's office that we've, you know, we've had to call. I had, I did file a, I had somebody in a few years back that got very upset with me. So I called the sheriff in and I wrote down a statement in case this person did come back. And I have it on file. So if there's anything that going forward, they come in and something happens. But we haven't had to push the panic button.
Thank you for coming in. We had, we looked at all of the overtime on Tuesday. And one of the reasons that I wanted to look at that is I assumed that there were needs in our office for increased staff, that we'd see evidence that there was a lot of overtime. And your office did not. And I don't, I don't, you've said you've been really careful to try to avoid it. But it's a little bit challenging to see that you haven't needed overtime, but you need to have a staff person.
There is some overtime in there that, you know, not excessive, because I hate to be excessive. There's, and it's not in the budget. So we've done our best to avoid it. It's been tricky, but we're doing it.
If the, with the increased automation, is it possible that you don't need the staff? That some of that would be more automated?
No, that's all the old stuff that's getting put in. This is the daily, this, the documents that, the current documents that come in daily. It's really, we don't do as much with those old records as far as the grantor grantee index. Those are done, those are just going to be put online to be made searchable. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So that outside, people from outside don't need to come into the office to search those grant or grantee indexes?
Just one more thing. We have a history of trying to, I mean, we've, we've reduced a couple of positions over time, but we always come back and there's always pressure to, to replace those. And, and I'm struggling with, with, if it was a good decision in 2019 and we tried it and it really is working with all of our needs, can we? So I'm, I'm struggling with that question about, because I think every time we reduce a position, we hear from the next, the next year's or budget talks that we need to relook at that. And, and we made that commitment. If we cut it, we'll see how it's going. But when I looked at the overtime and I looked at the reputation of the office, it doesn't seem to me like, like there's a need. That's me.
Yeah. I would love for you to come into the office and see what we do and look at it and meet the girls and, yeah. I mean, we have a great staff right now. The office is great. And we've always had a working register and I continue to work very hard. It, it's been a struggle.
I will come in.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I mean, we don't want to make a decision. I want to hear all of these first, then we'll, we'll talk about, you know, the decisions. But I do want decisions to be made, you know, and good for the clerk, good for everyone. So if there are no other questions, then I would just say thank you very much, Jen. I appreciate it.
Okay.
And we'll, when, after we hear from all the people, then we'll sit down and get ready to hear.
Okay. And do you, I mean, are, just if there's any other questions, let me know, too, if there's something I can get for you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then the next item would be on senior services. And that is actually on page 144. Laurel, thank you for sending us out. You know, that's really nice to have it all in the packet.
I have to update it.
Well, sure. And that's fine.
I don't know why Laurel didn't wait till the last minute at midnight to do that.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to her a little bit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I am coming before you today to talk about a salary classification change for the director or my position as senior services. On the top page that you, I put together as kind of a summary of background of how the salary, how it was established. And I presented this at the May Senior Services Advisory Committee for Feedback. And it was Commissioner Bunnock and Commissioner Alguire had, were in support of it and encouraged me to bring it to the entire board and during the budget time. So I'm here today to discuss that. I just want to give a little background on, on my department. It was established in 1975 with the Area Agency on Aging in response to the Old Americans Act being passed. And so it was established as a commission on aging here in La Lla County. And the focus of the department during those years was to provide some in-home services and some social opportunities for the seniors in our area. The previous director was here approximately 26 years. She did not hold a degree or professional experience related to seniors and the growing population. And at that time, it was established, it was a, it was, the budget was around $200,000, which is the fifth of the budget we currently have today. And the director's salary was established at $10,000 less than the other department heads. And during research, there's nothing written as to how the determination was made on that salary, why that was established that way. I spoke into several other elected officials, administration, and department heads, trying to get a historical knowledge of what, when they were, when that was established. And at that time, everyone just said it was, it was a lower amount because the director did not, had a lack of formal education and did not want that to match the other department head, department heads. In 2012, as you know, the department underwent a transition with the previous director retiring under some strange circumstances. And it, the, and the county decided to restructure the department in looking for someone that had a professional background with at least a bachelor's degree in social work, gerontology, nursing, some of that type of background. And so the parameters of, and the qualifications and job description changed, but however, the beginning salary remained the same, in that same, how it was established initially. And so I, I've done a little research and kind of looked up at other directors on services to aging in our area and the state in comparison as to my current salary. And you'll find on page, the third page in, there is a 10-county region, which we are associated with Area Agency. The salaries are listed there for your, for your, for your review. As well as, I did find the Michigan Directors of Services to the Aging, which is a conglomerate of organization of all the directors in the state of Michigan. And they had done a, a re, like a, a review of salaries in 2014. And at the, at that time, the average was $56,456. And currently, the, in the 10-county region, as of today, the average salary is $64,699. Our, the, my salary, starting salary is approximately $12,000, is $12,000 less than other department heads. And after eight and a half years, it's still approximately $6,000 less than the other director's salaries, around the, and approximately $4,000 less than the Directors of Services to the Aging. So there's a big discrepancy in there and trying to look at that. So I'm coming before you to ask that you, for a salary classification change, reflect the philosophical challenges and responsibilities that have changed with the position over the past 40 years. And also responsibly overseeing a budget of approximately a million dollars, a little under there currently. But, so I, I'm asking that the senior service director's starting salary would align in reference to the planning and IT directors. If you look at, on the second page, we have the current 2021 non-union wage schedule. And as you can see, the starting salaries are, vary for department heads. Elected officials have a different, have a slightly higher starting salary. But the planning director and IT would be in alignment with the professional position that I current, my, the position I currently hold. So I'm just asking that things be realigned and we look at that wage classification. I will also bring in, I think there's some discrepancy in the wage schedule that we have here. I think that should also be looked at. If you notice, for the starting salary, for my position is $52,691. The starting salary for the maintenance director is $52,446, which is only a couple hundred dollars difference between our salaries. But if you go to year four, there's a $3,000 difference. So somewhere along the line, the math, I don't, I don't know if that is not matching up or what, how the formula was done. But I think that is something that needs to be looked at as well.
Thank you. And that, if there is a discrepancy, you also have a master's, right?
Correct.
And you've been here eight years and you've done an excellent job. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Any questions?
April, when you hired in, did you have your master's?
I did.
You did. So when you hired in as a master's level, you agreed to the salary at the time you took the position?
I did.
Thank you.
So we're not making decisions right now. We're just hearing people.
Well, yeah, we're hearing it and seeing if there's any other questions about it so that when we have a discussion, any questions we have can be answered to help us with our discussion. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, April. So the next thing would be prosecuting attorney. That's on page 58.
I need to ask you where.
Of these supplemental.
Oh, supplemental.
Yeah. Or, or, I'm an email, I believe that, that's set out.
Right. I just. I haven't had internet for two days.
One or the other. Sorry. Trying to be helpful.
Morning, gentlemen.
Hello, everybody.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you all for listening to our request again. We did this a little bit out of order last time and the request was to have us present it before the budget meeting. So that's what we're doing. I also have, there were some questions regarding case numbers. There was also some questions regarding kind of a wage study to see what was going around. And so I did all those things for you. The main thing that, let's start with the wage study really quick. I have a broken-down summary. It's a, an Excel spreadsheet. Those were the different positions that were open between June 17 and 18. Those were the different positions that were open between June 1st and July 31st. There were about 10 different assistant prosecuting attorney positions open. Eight of those required no experience or very little experience. You didn't even have to be licensed in the sense that they were looking at people who were taking the bar exam and haven't even passed yet. So those were the very basic ones. The range was almost $50,000 to almost $78,000, and that was for, again, no experience. For those with experience of five years or more that I still felt I was qualified for, it started at $77,000 and went up to almost $100,000. I also reviewed, which I don't have, I don't believe I put it as, yes, I did. It's in the PowerPoint. It was the Grand Traverse Prosecutor's Office, and they have, they're at, trying to get a new person. They're having difficulty, probably because they're only offering $43,000, and that person has to have less than three months of experience. It's not, they want someone who's brand new, who has, so they can, I guess, mold them how they want. But as you can see, their APAs go all the way up to $98,600, which is more than Joe makes even. They also have six assistant prosecutors plus a staff civil counsel. They also have someone who's doing kind of half and half as well, and they have on-call pay. If you go to the next page, I spoke with Jim Rossiter for Antrim Prosecutor as well. It was also on the pack is the Prosecuting Attorneys Coordinating Council. They're the ones who kind of watch over everything. They have two assistant prosecutors plus a third position open. They also do on-call pay. For us, we have two assistant prosecutors. We're not getting a third. My wage is, it's about $4,000 less than the, kind of their lowest that's there right now. And there's no on-call pay. Some of the things that I do on-call, over this last weekend, I was contacted during, actually, a wedding reception by Lieutenant Wright. We had shots fired. He wanted to know what we could do. There were a variety of options we went, that I went through with him. And frankly, I think we probably prevented a homicide, but that's, you know, open to And then Saturday morning, I had three warrant requests. Two of those requests were for felonies. Sunday morning, I had two more warrant requests. And I contacted or spoke with the jail about four or five times over the weekend. Just to let you know, I mean, it was a busy weekend. I'm not, that was a little out of the ordinary, but I still do 24/7 on-call. I get phone calls at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock on a regular basis, usually because they can't go through the chain of command as easy in the sense that they can't ask their lieutenant because their lieutenant is asleep getting ready for the next day, whereas they just call me and say, hey, we've got this issue. What can we do? What do we need to do? A week ago, I, a week or two ago, I talked with one deputy deputy stroke four times for a single event. We talked for probably an hour between all those calls because there was just so much going on. And again, as you see, there is no on-call pay. There's, we don't do overtime. It is a salaried position. There are some things that I'm doing more than other assistant prosecutors. I do training for law enforcement. I've done training for the, oh, they're the fire, fire chiefs of the area, talking about administrative warrants. There, I'm sure you've seen all the other things that I already put in there. One of the, the main thing is we do, we are at a lower pay scale than the other surrounding counties. Again, by my experience, I, it would be considerably higher as well if I were to start a new job, which I don't want to do, and I'm not threatening to do anything. I'm just putting it out there that, because I love it here. I just, I love the law enforcement. I love that they call me all the time. I love that I'm able to help them and to help keep them safe and help to keep the community safe. I just, yeah. So we do have $6,300 in our intern budget under contractual services. That could cover the large majority of the request. The request is for $72,000. Next year, I, well, I am at the highest bracket right now, and since, I don't believe that a pay increase for cost of living has been set forth so far. So it would be roughly $10,000, $6,300 of that would come, or could come directly from our contractual services. And then we would just ask that the remainder be an increase to the prosecutor's budget for the line item, for, for my wages. Let me see if there is anything else. I think that's pretty much it, because I tried to make everything in here as best as possible. Yes?
For those counties that have, for those counties that have on-call benefits, how does that work? It sounds like you had a busy weekend. If you were doing that same thing in Grand Traverse County, what would be your compensation on-call?
I have not, I don't know. All, I just noticed that under the Prosecuting Attorneys Associate, or, excuse me, Prosecuting Attorneys Coordinating Council, which is the four-page document that I supplied, if you don't have it, I can give it to you right here. It just says whether or not it provides on-call pay under the PA information, and it does for those two counties, and it does not for our county. Now, as with everything, it's probably varied, of course, with how much they're paying. To think of it this way, if it was $200 a weekend, that would be $10,000, which is essentially what I do. So just kind of an idea.
Are you on-call every weekend?
I'm not only on-call every weekend, I'm on-call every night, every morning. I take, I get better reception than Joe on my phone. I also have my, because of that grant we were able to do as well, I've been able to streamline a lot of our processes for doing the remote warrant complaints. I've been working with the magistrate, the deputies, lieutenant, the undersheriff, the COs, in order to streamline that process, how it goes to different people, things of that nature. So there's been a lot of really cool things that we've been able to do. Even though I am on-call, even though I do all that stuff, we've been able to, to make it better.
So, so Doug, Joe apparently doesn't have good reception. Joe, generally, I know you should be on-call also.
Well, I am too.
You are also.
And I come in on the weekends. I've been in here at night doing search warrants till four in the morning. Sometimes if they don't get ahold of Tristan, they get ahold of me. We're all on-call, basically. The fact is, is our job is 24/7. What I wanted to highlight, Tristan's trying to highlight, is because of his skill set, he's been able to do stuff at home remotely, as I am too. But crime doesn't stop at 5:00 PM. Officers need, I get calls in the middle of the night, so.
And then also does Doug, is Doug also on-call then? So three of you on-call, and three of you are receiving calls all the time?
Well, what they'll do is, if, for example, I need to go to the UP, how often, which I have been since November, I'll, I'll send a note to dispatch saying I'm not going to be available, because if I'm at my cot cabin in the woods, I get no reception at all. But oftentimes, they will go down the list. Sometimes they'll call me, sometimes they'll call Doug. Sometimes it's officers. Some officers are very comfortable talking to me, and they'll call me. A lot of times, it just so happens that when, on Saturday morning, we'll get a jail roster list. We'll get a list on Saturday and Sunday morning as to who was arrested, and then we make a determination, do we have to, depending on if they're incarcerated, if they're not, all sorts of other constitutional and statutory considerations come into place. But we'll get a notice in the morning as to what they're, what they're arrested for. Then Tristan and I will often communicate between ourselves as to who's going to do it and what we think an appropriate charge will be. So not only is he on-call, when he gets called or something comes in, he and I are also communicating as well.
And is Doug also, is Doug in on these communications also?
At times, at times. You know, there's some additional things I guess I want to say before we start, if I may. You know, what we're asking the board to do is reward somebody for knowledge, experience, and a skill set. Every year I've been under budget, $15,000 to $17,000. So really, if you grant a request, our bottom line's not going to be affected. Tristan mentioned the intern salary. There's other areas in our budget that, really, we're not, we're not going to bankrupt the county with this request. Really, the quest is about fairness. One thing I want to bring to your attention, there are 27 jobs listed in the Prosecutor's monthly newsletter for, for jobs across the state. We're fortunate that we've got the people that we have, but other prosecutors are having trouble attracting people because of the wage. They're now in competition with the Michigan Independent Indigent Defense Council. Good for Paul Jarboe, he just got $45,000. That's affected our ability to attract and retain people. Calcasas County prosecutor has resigned because he can't keep people. And fortunately, I don't have that problem. I'm just telling you, it's a problem across the state. It used to be prosecutors' jobs, working for government, was a calling, and it still is. But people also, you know, the, the, the wage scale hasn't kept up with the cost of living and living up here. And it's really a question of fairness. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, too, guess who's the FOIA coordinator for this county? Me. Guess how many other prosecutors in the state do that? One. Guess what I get compensated? Nothing. Every day I walk into the office, I usually have averaged three to four FOIA questions. Guess who else in this county wants to be the FOIA coordinator? Nobody. Okay? I'm not asking for my salary to be increased because I'm doing extra work, which are not my statutory duties. What I'm asking is that you recognize that, that we're a team here. We all work together. I'm very proud of the fact that I've been the prosecutor for 15 years plus. I'm the longest-serving prosecutor for Leal County. Every time I come up for election, Judge Power and Judge Rogers write me a check. You know why? Because they know I'm doing a good job. Some of you believe that perhaps these are just puzzle pieces, that we can just, why not, you know, why not just have Tristan do what Doug does, and why not have Doug do what Tristan does? People are not like puzzle pieces. They're not always interchangeable. What I've done carefully and thoughtfully over the last 15 years, and really, the last six or five since Tristan's been here, is plan for the future. I'm 61 years old this summer. I won't be around here forever. Doug will be retiring probably in the near future. I'm looking at the future of this county. I want to leave this county in the hands of somebody that's competent, that will have the same goals and values that I have to lead this office. Again, I need your help to assure this. Tristan's not threatening me that he's going to do this, he's going to do that, but I constantly tell Tristan, you got to do what's best for your family. I come here, I don't come here every year to ask for more money. The last time I came here was six years ago, when I asked that you let me hire Tristan. And I'm glad you said yes, because he's been a very valuable asset. I guess what I'm asking is not only to compensate Tristan because it's fair, because equitable, because he's qualified, because it's the right thing to do, but it also helps us plan for the future. There's no guarantees of anything, but part of my, part of my request to come in here and give him really a asset, even give him a fair wage, is because in my, my future plans is that I'd like Tristan to be the next Leal County prosecutor. And in order for him to do that, he's got to be here, he's got to continue to have the relationships that he does. Frankly, he's got to afford to live here. Right now, he doesn't live in Leal County. He's looked at houses. We all know what the housing situation is in Leal County. You know what the numbers are, you know what his qualifications are. The bottom line is, if you grant my request, my budget won't change, the bottom line. It's not going to change. I'm not, really, in essence, I'm not asking for an increase, I'm just asking that numbers be shifted around. Thank you.
There is one other thing I wanted to point out. April 1st of this year, we had a massive legislative overhaul. What that means is whenever someone gets arrested on misdemeanor, they must be, there must be a complaint by 3:00 PM the next day, otherwise that person goes free without any bond conditions. So drunk driving, if we don't charge them within that short, less than 24-hour time period usually, then they don't have any bond conditions. If it's an assault, no bond conditions. Domestic violence, I still think that they can do.
They do.
Bond conditions for that. But other than that, no other misdemeanors get bond conditions. So that's another reason why we, before, you know, when I first started, we didn't need to, we could let a person sit for 48, 72 hours, depending on what the crime was. Now we have, no longer have that option. It's got to be done quickly in order to protect the people, protect the public, and make sure there's fewer crimes, essentially.
I mean, the legislature just amended the statute because before, Michigan State Police was not arresting people for drunk driving, because when they, when they amended the statute, they didn't allow for that. So basically, you were, you were arrested for drunk driving, you went to jail, you blew, and then you were free to go. You were free to walk back to your car, get in your car and drive. It was just absolute insanity. And what we did to prevent that, as soon as we knew there was an arrest, we jumped on it immediately and authorized a complaint. And that way, the person was seen by the magistrate as well, in lieu of simply just getting a bail bond from the jail, and therefore, bond conditions could be put in place, no drinking, no alcohol testing. It really became an issue of public safety. And frankly, because of Tristan and because of our coordination that we had with the magistrate and the law enforcement, we were able to fix that until the legislature fixed that within the last month.
Sorry, you were going to say something.
I just, I just thought, you know, I saw something here, you know, in one of those annual prosecuting surveys. You know, Leal County is ranked 63rd in population here, you know, but you have to go all the way up to 49th to get the equivalent budget at the prosecuting attorney camps. So I mean, your budget is much higher than in all populations, close to that, yes.
So many of those have a civil counsel as well, if you look at it. They also have different support staff as well. So for instance, exactly what you were talking about, I, I've seen that as well. We have, as you go through it, and I know you can do this on your own during your, your discussions, but you can look and you can see how many assistant prosecutors there are versus the office administrator. Some of these have crime investigators, but the main one is that you'll see that they have civil counsel. As most department heads can tell you, they've contacted me, Joe, Doug multiple times on a frequent basis for help on X, Y, or Z. For a while, we were doing, helping with the treasurer on their.
Forclosures.
Forclosures. We're no longer doing that, they've been doing that themselves, but it's, we're getting questions from these other places, and we are acting as civil counsel, essentially, on a very regular basis. So that's one of the things. And as well as, you'll notice, I mean, Joe's salary is much lower than, than all these other ones as, as they're coming up as well. I know that's neither here nor there, but there are different duties that we're doing that are parsed out different in other counties.
So they wouldn't be in those other county's budgets, but they, they are in yours?
Well, for example, I think the distinction Tristan's trying to make is, in a lot of those budgets you're looking at, there's civil counsel, and, and, or they're acting as corporate counsel for the county. And that, that would really be why it's increased. I think the point he's trying to make is that we often act as civil counsel for department heads, and and I am, and we're not being compensated for that. Not everything goes to full stoker, not everything goes to the MMRMA, because, so, I guess my point is, is one reason those other counties may have a higher budget is because they're also, they're also, well, one
Well, I'm not saying they have a much lower budget.
Pardon me?
You'd have to go up ten steps in population to get to someone with the equivalent budget, so they have a higher population, and they have a much lower budget.
But, but you know, the flip side of that, Will, is that even though we may have a higher budget, our salaries aren't reflected. I don't know where the extra is. It's not in paying me, and it's not in paying him. It's somewhere else, okay? It's not reflected in our salaries, because if you go through that analysis, you look at those very same counties, what's their prosecutor being paid? Oh, probably a hundred and twenty-five thousand. What's their chief assistant being paid? Probably ninety-eight. What are their assistants being paid? Ninety-two. So I don't know where that increase is. But you're right, other counties have a higher budget, but it's not being reflected because we're getting paid more.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess the point is that if you're saying that you're staying within your budget, well, your budget is a hundred thousand higher than a population that's twice of ours. So to stay within that budget, it doesn't reflect that, you know, that you're doing it in a, in an economical way. And I'm not saying that.
Well, again, you still understand. But you know what? Look at our budget, and look at the other salaries other people are being paid. Our high budget is not getting eaten up because I'm a fat cat raking in the money, and he's making too much. There's something else in the budget that's driving that, and it's not prosecutor salaries.
So there's something else that's a part of this as well, is these are self-reported. This is a survey, so in my opinion, there's probably a pretty good chance that it doesn't have everything in it. Here's a good one is the the IOSCA?
IASCO.
IASCO, thank you. Which is, they say that their total budget is two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. So eighty-eight thousand of that is their PA. They have a chief assistant for sixty, and then a victims' witness staff, clerical, things of that. To me, it looks like that is only covering salary, so eighty, one forty, one ninety, two Yeah, that is all it is covered. So that just shows that their budget is for, straight up for, for the salary of those people, so.
And yours covers everything that goes on in the lawsuit.
And number two, some of our budget, like our victims' advocate, our child support establishment person, even though it's reflected in our budget, on the other hand, the county gets reimbursed on the backside for those, for those costs. I come here every year to get probably over eighty percent of those costs covered by grants or by state funding, so even though it's reflected in my budget, it looks like a big thing, we get reimbursed. My budget doesn't get reduced to reflect that reimbursement, but it does go back to the county. That's something important to think about, too.
Right. So, looking at the survey, then, you're saying that this really isn't apples to apples?
That's correct, yeah.
That some are just reporting salaries where you're reporting everything that has expenses?
That's my belief, too.
That was my question.
No, great question, thank you for that.
I didn't understand the difference.
No, you brought up a very good point, and I had to think it through while you were asking it, to maybe come up with an explanation, because what Tristan said, yeah, maybe IASCO County's two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Well, all of it's being eaten up by salary.
They're not slow showing the other things, and that's what I get from the survey.
No, great question, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, really can verify how, how much have been served on several committees that you folks have acted as in civil capacity, helping with questions, always being there, always being ready. And looking at your budget, I can see exactly what you mean, that it does go to other things. Buildings and grounds charges alone are almost thirty thousand. So there's a lot in here that you don't control, and that's kind of what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, everybody, for listening to us, and thanks for those good questions.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Everybody have a great day.
Then that brings us to administrative restructuring proposal.
So we'll start with the most important issue, is that Gourmet Chef Matt Angioli is grilling at noon, and all of you invited to join us for hamburger and hot dogs. This is our August meeting of the Leal County Safety Committee, and we usually provide meals. And it's today at noon, and Matt, I would like all of you to join us, so I assume we're still here. If you'd like to take a break at noon, you can, you can walk next door and get a hamburger and hot dog from Gourmet Chef Angie. I told him he has to wear his hat, I'm not sure he's going to do that or not, but I told him to wear his chef's hat. So I just wanted to give an overview, excuse me. I've got a little bit of hay here, we're starting here. It's that time of month, August, I always, my eyes get stuffed up in my throat, it's sore. So I can definitely tell it's August. Just want to give an overview of some issues that I've noticed over the last several years and months. And I have five issues to talk about, and some of them are not specifically to the budget, but some of them for you to think about as you go forward, because you know I will be departing next year at some point, and just want to give an overview of some things that I've noticed that I think we could enhance on. I think all of us are very fortunate, we have a great staff here. If you look at our department heads, when you look at our elected officials, I think everyone's very capable, very professional. We're blessed with some great support staff people here at every office. When you look at, since I've been here, the only major restructuring we've had to do was in senior services. When was the commission on aging? That was a challenging situation my first year here, but outside of that, I think we have very capable, professional people across the board, working everywhere. We have a great group of volunteers that serve many boards and committees. I think the commission here has done a good job of trying to keep things at a high level. I refer, I think I referred this book before, Good to Great. It's easy when things are good, it's moving to the next level that's very difficult. And I think there's some areas that you feel we may need to have enhancement on. Couple points that I think we need to have enhancement on, and so I just like to review those. I'll start with the parks and recs. And I was not aware that the parks and recs, independently also, it was kind of feeding the same way. If you notice, in their request for 2022, they've asked for some funds for administrative assistance. It's a great group of volunteers, they work extremely hard, we have beautiful parks. They've restructured now where there are subcommittees on every park. Seems to be working well, but we've had some hiccups the last couple of years, just in terms of the process, procedures, going out for bids on some projects, following county policies and procedures and so forth. And it's because we don't have anyone assigned to them as their county liaison. Laurel's been taking minutes, basically on a volunteer basis, it's not part of her duties, and she has tried to steer them in the right direction, but as you know, through no intention there part, we've had some challenges with some of the projects that they have done. Things could have been moved a little quicker on some projects. Policies were not always followed, and I think it's time we seriously look at assigning an administrative person to the parks and recs. It's a large budget. They are one of the most vocal groups in terms of meetings, between their general meeting and their three parks. It's, it's spent a lot of time committing on Laurel's Park. And at some point, I think we need to address that, because I receive when she's doing that, it's taking time away from her regular duties and responsibilities. And the parks and recs really would appreciate having some administrative assistant. I'm not sure if someone will be coming here from parks and recs later, but in their proposal, which I really did not know they were going to do, they kind of came up with the same recommendation. They are requesting some administrative help. They're looking for finances to help them with their administrative duties, and so that's one issue. Another issue that we've talked about the last couple of years is the dam authority. And I last night watched a meeting from Tuesday, I was not here Tuesday, but I think that's a good example, where you have good people. The way the dam authority is structured is the road commission and the drain commissioner. Some of those road commissioners did not know they were on dam authority when they ran for road commission. I think they struggled. For the first probably seven years I was here, the dam authority sometimes met two or three times a year total, because the dam was fairly new, and there really were no issues. They had funds from their assessment, and things were going pretty smooth. It seems the last several years, there's, I wouldn't say in a crisis mode, but things have surprised the board many times. And we had some hiccups once again, would not follow through on proper procedures, policies. They did not follow the bid process sometimes. Some decisions were made without input from the dam authority, and it's not anyone's fault, individual who's on the dam authority. I think, once again, just like the park authority, there is no one guiding them in terms of policies, procedures, and so forth, and that needs to be addressed. And one time, I think when you restructured the road commission, you actually talked about restructuring the dam authority also. The way it was structured is it is composed of members of the road commission and the drain commissioner. That decision the board made, you could restructure that. I think maybe last year, or the year before, you talked about actually restructuring that and appointing people that really want to be on the dam authority, may have some expertise. And I think it's time that you look at that in the future to see how to go forward, because without blaming anyone, if you look at the last eight, nine months to the last two years, there's been quite a few issues that have surfaced. And it seems like they're, they're acting reactive versus proactive. And I know you struggle, they don't have a firm budget. I think several of you have asked them for a long-term plan, that seems to be changing. They said they have some safety concerns, are those short-term or long-term concerns? Can they be addressed next year, or do they have to be done right now? I think Tuesday's meeting was a prime example of that. Like I said, I wasn't here, but I did watch the videotape of that. I think Jerry Coleman does the best he can, but if Jerry was here, he'd tell you the same thing. He's not an administrative person, he's a maintenance person. And he struggles with his role there with the dam authority, in terms of what his duties and responsibilities are versus the dam authority members. And the dam authority members, sometimes they themselves struggle on what they can do and can't do, and what the county policies are, because they do have to follow all county policies. So I think long-term, you need to have a decision about how you can go forward with the dam authority. If you're going to continue with the same structure, you need some administrative overhead there. And I'm willing to do that for as long as I'm here, starting from now on. I'll be at every dam authority meeting, because I think they really do struggle, and they do need assistance. And quite a few times after a meeting, I get a call from Steve Christian or John Pope, and say, hey, can we meet, can we talk about how to do this? And I say, well, if you let me know beforehand, we could have resolved this prior to that. You know, they're good people, they're all very good people, but they struggle and are not experts in county policies and procedures, so that's something that you do think about. But short-term, I'm going to work with them, I'll be at every dam authority meeting, kind of guiding through that process, because there's some legitimate issues there. Dam's getting a little older now, there's some safety issues, but we need to come up with a long-term plan and a long-term budget, so you're not surprised every two, three months with another request. And during the budget process, I think the last three years, this big kind of struggle, you kind of just put some money out there. And they kind of came up with a plan, but then it changes, and then they don't have enough money, or they need another feasibility study, another structural study on something that they didn't budget on. And then you're put in an awkward position where, does it really need it, or can this wait till next year? And is this part of the big picture, and are there other issues out there down the road? So I think you really need to look at the dam authority, who's on it, how it's structured. You do control that. It is mandated that you have a dam authority, but the membership and how they're selected is up to the seven of you to determine that. So, but I'd be willing to work with them, because I think they're all good people, and meanwhile, they're just going down different paths. I think the discussion happened Tuesday was a prime example of that, over a minor issue, nine hundred dollars, that could have been handled so much differently, and could have come to the board, and I think you all would have been supportive. You all want to deal with the safety issues, it's just the process, once again. It's not the end result, it's the process. So that's two. In my memo, on June twenty-second, I talked about the clerk's office. Once again, I'll state that I had no dialogue with Michelle or anybody when I did this memo. It's based on my observations the last couple of years, especially the last probably eighteen months, that that office is extremely busy. They've taken a lot of duties, responsibilities, simply not fair that their staff is working a lot of extra hours on weekends. It's very common for the staff to send out emails on Saturdays and Sundays, because I get them. And it's time to look at that, and especially the last year with the changes in the election laws and the COVID. That office has been stressed, and has caused some issues, has caused some personnel challenges. On the flip side, I think they have a great staff. If you look at the people working right now in the accounting department, I think they do a great job. I think they're here right now, I think I saw Johanna and Sarah there. I think they work very well. I can tell you, and I'll let Michelle talk about her request, because it's her request, so I don't want to go into details, because I don't know the details. It's her department. But I can tell you, everywhere I work, whether it's been college, or you know, super town, two different school districts in here, the accounting department is always a target, because they're the ones that have to say no. And everywhere I worked, at some point, you have to say no to certain requests, if rules are not followed. And that's been the case here. It was the case when I first got here, and it's the case now, and it probably will continue to be that. And I know they are firm and fair, because I got turned down for a coffee and muffin one time, because I didn't have a receipt. And I got called in, turned down, and they questioned my tip sometimes and so forth, so I think they do the best they can. They are struggling with all the duties and responsibilities, because the clerk's office is more the clerk. They do the courts, they do weddings, they do everything that Michelle will talk about. Like I said, this is her, she also has a request, and so mine was kind of a secondary one, just to get the discussion started. I think she's next on agenda, and can talk about that. The other issue is, as you know, I'm departing here next year, and I think, when you talk about the finance and HR, I think it needs to be a bigger picture, to talk about what you want in a county administrator that will work for Leal County, because every county is different. Some counties do have administrators that have a financial background, and are chief financial officers. Most counties, the administrator is the HR person. So I think you need to decide if you're going to go forward with an HR or finance department, how that will impact your choice of the next administrator, because you want to make sure it's the right fit. You want to get the right person in the right job that works with this board. And the way it's structured in one county may not work in other counties. And this has been an ongoing debate, I think it happens all the time. I was just on a listserv this last month, and there's quite a few counties looking at different options of restructuring. I can tell you, my very first meeting here in 2012, and I think Commissioner Lauter was the only one that was here, there was debate right before I got here about accounting and financing, and whether it should be a finance department. Because my first meeting, I was asked that question, I didn't know anything about the history and so forth. And I know it's been discussed prior to that, too. And so I think it's good to have an honest, professional discussion, how to go forward with that. I don't have a financial background, so in 2012, I said I was not interested in that. In terms of HR, I think any administrator you bring in, unless you really want to focus on a finance person, probably has HR background, I would question anyone that you hire that would not have at least a basic HR background to be a county administrator. Very few counties in northern Michigan have a HR department. As I said before, I think we're fortunate here that we don't have any major personnel issues. Since I've been here, outside of the law enforcement, and next door, we had one grievance, it was my first year, and it got resolved in a week, and it was some of our minor technical issues. We've not had a single grievance in this building since that time. The grievances we had next door were over contract language issues. They weren't personnel problems, they were contract issues. We've had some minor personnel challenges with people, but we have resolved at some point, it never got to the board. We've had no lawsuits, we've been, I think, pretty proactive. We did all our policies and procedures. We had policy procedures here that were fifteen, twenty years old, and as you remember, most of you, we went through those last four or five years. Every policy we have has been reviewed by legal counsel and modified the last four years, so I think we're in good shape there. Could we be more proactive? Yeah, there's a lot of things we could be doing. One of the things I suggested maybe that you look at, be kind of who you get as your county administrator, maybe enhance that position, take the administrative assistant position and enhance it more. take the administrative assistant position and enhance it more, do some of the more HR technical part of it. Which we could be more proactive in terms of the training, some seminars and so forth. Maybe take some of the burdened burdens that are done by the clerk's office. If you want to help that, over to that new person. But that's a discussion you need to have. But when you talk about HR and finance, I think you need to have a bigger discussion, what you want in an administrator. Because if you want administrator with a financial background, that will make a difference. If you want a separate finance department, then you probably want different skills for that administrator. So I think that's a bigger discussion that you need to have before you go forward. But those are just my overviews. I think we have a great staff here. It's been a pleasure working here. I know all of you are looking out for the best interest of Leland County. It's been stressful here the last several months with the staff, with this debate going on. As you know, it kind of caught people off guard. And those things happen sometimes, but I guess my only request is that you make some decisions, go forward, and come up with a plan that's best for Leland County, that's good long-term. What you don't want is constant stress and constant turnover. And it's critical that you get the right person in place for the administrative position. Since I've been here, Grand Travers County's had four administrators. Benson's has had five, they've just hired number five since I've been here. And even if you look from probably Claire and up to the UP, there's a constant turnover in those jobs. I think I'm number two in seniority, with nine and a half years in, compared to everybody else. So these jobs, just like school superintendent jobs, kind of turnover on a regular basis. Different boards come in with different ideas, different thoughts. And it's no secret, there's been friction in many counties between the clerk and the administrator. Michelle always jokes with me when I go to my administrative meeting how, "So, did you beat up on the clerk today?" I said, "No, no, no, no." But that's been a challenge here in the past. And it hasn't worked out very well. I've really enjoyed working with Michelle over the years, as I have with John and every department head. So I think it's good that you have this dialogue. I think there's some issues you need to probably address to go from that good to great level. But I think overall, you have a great county here. We've been in the black every year. The only year we haven't been the black is the year we spent several million dollars here on the roof and the HVAC system here. Outside of that, every single year, we've been in the black. We've been able to settle contracts very easily. I come from an environment where it took me two years to settle one labor contract with the MEA, with the teachers' union, we're here. We can settle five, six contracts in usually a couple of weeks. So it's been a good environment. And if there were issues, that would not be happening. A lot of counties are struggling with labor issues, and that's not the case here. We do need to talk at some future meeting about contract negotiations. And I will be questioning when we go into closed session to talk about that. Because we have to start that process fairly soon. And it's critical as we do that, that we're all on the same page. Because I assume that the chairman and vice chairman will be our negotiation team, once again. And they need to know, and we need to know, how to proceed with negotiations. Because there'll be some, I think, some interesting challenges this year compared to past years. Just with the federal funding and so forth with that. So that's just an overview. Michelle can give you more details, she's next, about her request. But I think you need to look at that request, you need to look at Parks and Recs, you need to look at dam authority, maybe enhancing HR. But also have an in-depth discussion at some point, how you want to proceed with this position. Because you want to make sure you're on the same page going forward. And you want to make sure that whoever you get fits your goals and objectives. Because if it doesn't, then it doesn't work. And just locally, since I've been here, there's been many counties that have struggled with that position. And I know you struggled here prior to me coming in with some administrators that were here for a short amount of time. It's a critical decision, that's probably the biggest decision that you'll make next year. And so you want to make sure you spend some time and do it properly. So in simple terms, that's my overview.
I just had one about, you're thinking that, will it be a... I always think of the maintenance director as the park and recs director. But obviously, that's, you know, that's the way I... But you're thinking someone else...
Well, in reality, and I'll be careful not to slight Jerry. And if Jerry was here, he'd say the same thing, because Jerry and I got this talk. Jerry's strength is the maintenance. He's not in the administrative part. He's the director of basically facilities and maintenance. But it's unfair to Jerry, put that in a row. He started here as, I think, a custodian of maintenance, that kind of worked his way up. But he just does not have the administrative background. And it's unfair to put him in this place. In a perfect world, if you look at a structure, take the names away for it, our facilities director, I'll call that, should be head of buildings and grounds, should be head of the parks, should be working with dam authority and so forth. But that's more of an administrative role, where Jerry has more of a technical, hands-on role, and does not have the skills nor does he, I think, have the desire to take on those duties. As you know, Jerry means very well. The guy will be here seven days a week if you want him here. If he gets a call at three o'clock in the morning, he'll be here. But he's not an administrator. And if we were to start from the beginning, I would say we restructure the whole area and bring in like a facilities director, which many counties have, that has those skills, that can work with the parks and recs, can work with the dam authority, can work with the septic system. In some respects, a lot of what Gary O'Connor does fills that role. He's kind of a general. And Jerry relies on Gary quite a bit to handle those roles. And as you know, when Gary presents, he's very well-prepared. And he does it in a way that Eric Baller, you could understand what he's talking about. Because that's, he has more of a passion for that. But Jerry's more of a hands-on maintenance worker.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm thinking about when you're talking about the director for the park and rec. Wouldn't it be better to try and put that in with the facility director?
Yeah.
You know, and that, who's ever in that place, I mean, it would be, it would take those kinds of things and take that burden off of Jerry, like being at...
And really, it's not fair to Jerry. It really is something that the board should look at when they move this campus. Remember, when Jerry was hired, the campus at Leland, we had at least one less park, and we had fewer buildings, and very simple buildings. This is a very complex campus here. This HVAC is very complex, the whole campus. With the septic system is very complex. The dam is, Jerry used to literally have boards that he would move up and down. You know, so you take Jerry, he was hired for one thing, and it kind of has evolved for the director. So we assume he's going to have the skills and process, and that's not his forte. Jerry would be very happy just working, I think, in the buildings, doing the... He's very good with the sewer system, that's a very technical thing. In terms of dam, he's very good at the actual work of it. But it's the long-term planning and so forth. And really, it's not fair to ask Jerry to do that, because he simply does not have that background and those skills. So yes, if we were to start with a blank sheet of paper, our facilities director, and I think at some point, we may want to get to that point, where we truly hire a facilities director. Because I think when you look at, no disrespect to Gary O'Connor, or DMW or engineers, we're spending a lot of money on those services. And I think on the right structure, we can do that in-house. Much of the work that we're contracting out, if we had a true facilities director, I think could have been done in-house. So you look at the cost of that?
Right, you know, I guess that's what I'm talking about. And, you know, that needs to be really considered.
But I know, many of you have been frustrated with the parks and recs. Not because they're not working hard, it's just, they struggle sometimes following policies and procedures and coming up plans. I'm starting to see that more and more with the dam authority also. Good people, good intentions, but just need some guidance.
Right, and I know this isn't on there, but I'm just wondering, does that go to the Department of Public Works as well?
Yeah, they don't need that often. But yes, in theory, yes.
I mean, we have the two facilities, as far as Northport and Leland, that were involved in...
If we were to start with a blank sheet, I would say definitely yes. You create a director of facilities and have that all report to that person.
Were there any other questions? Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, can we take just a five-minute break? That'd be all right? Till 12:00. We ready? Call us back later. So, did you want to do a presentation?
I don't have a presentation, I don't have documents for you. I'm just going to speak. Because I think there's been enough speaking about this. But the one thing I wanted to touch on, that's not part of my county clerk, because my additional staff request is not for accounting functions. It is strictly for the county clerk section. But before I get to that, Chat was mentioning about finances and wherever he's been, and I talked to counterparts, they have the same issues with finances and enforcing things. Probably 15 years ago, the new commissioners may not be aware of it, but anyone that's been here well should. Every year in October, when we adopt our budget, we adopt what's called the Appropriations Act. Probably 15 years ago, what we did here in the county is we added a separate, a new paragraph to it. And it says, "Be it further resolved that all county elected officials and county department heads shall abide by the 2021," this is from my budget rules, "as adopted and amended by this board, and that the budgeted funds are appropriated contingent upon compliance with all approved county policies and procedures." That was added because we had an elected official that felt once their budget was approved, that meant they could do whatever they want. The county board adopts the policies, the county board adopts the procedures. The county clerk does not, but we do enforce them. I don't, I don't control the budget rules, you do. We take them, they're expected to be followed. If there are issues that an individual may have with the budget rules, and they don't like those things to be enforced, and they need to come before the board, and if they're eliminated, then it's one less enforcement issue, or one less thing that we need to make sure people are compliant with. We also don't create the lawful expenditures that's put out by the state of Michigan. So 95% of the people are just fine. 5% like everything. If everything were 100, we would question what's going on if everyone was happy. When someone does have an issue, we point out where the rules are. And most people are like, "Oh, wow, I didn't know that, no issue." We correct it, we move on. If it doesn't work that seamlessly, which isn't very often, but when it doesn't, we go to the administrator. These are what the rules say, this is what the person wants to do, whatever. We usually resolve it. When it escalates from there and we can't resolve it internally, then it comes before the board. So that's the process. This isn't the county clerk telling anyone what they can or cannot do. This is following the procedures and rules and everything set up by the Board of Commissioners, whether it be for the travel policy, credit cards, travel, whatever the case may be. So, and most people are fine with it, they just didn't know, it's really simply, or they forgot. Or their department head didn't tell them. So, I don't know of any issues in the last couple of years. So, aside from that, my request is for an additional staff member in the county clerk's office. There has been voicing of concern with the hours I work and with the overtime. If I, I went from a very veteran staff to a very new staff. I had retirements, I had promotions, I had some lateral transfers. I don't remember if, some of you should recall, when we had the ransomware attack and our computers were down. It probably drove one of my employees to get a lateral transfer. That affected, it didn't affect, we made sure, and Ron worked with us, and so did all the people that were brought in. We got the finances up and running immediately. So we had no downtime to affect accounts payable or payroll. We took a huge hit in the court system. Most of you may not be aware of it, but for probably four and a half, five months, we could not be connected to the AS400 through Grand Travers, and that's who we work with. We had, we were working off of laptops, connected to hotspots with cellphones, to the windows wherever we could get reception. I, when I even had to go to Staples, as did Ron, we had to buy special printers. That put us down for five months, with us doing work two to three times over. It created overtime. It also was so overwhelming for one of the new people I was training, that by the end of it, an opening came up, it's a perfect fit. There's not as many moving parts as what I experienced in my office. But because of that, I lost 294 hours of staff time. At the same time that happened, had someone else go on FMLA leave, lost 252 hours. I don't know what my, let's see, what was my 19? I had in 19, in elections, we only clocked 77.75 overtime hours. In the county clerk's division, had 725.5, and circuit court, 58.75. So if that's what staff is doing, that's what I'm doing. Staff's not working extra hours without me working extra hours. We have this year, let's see, last year, given an election year and COVID, we had in elections, 285.75 overtime hours. And this is regular and straight overtime, because we talked about that. And then in 215, which is the county clerk, I had 326.25. So you take that right there, you've got over 600 hours. So you double that, because I'm working it. That's what staff's being paid for, I'm just working it, I'm not being extra compensated, nor do I expect to be unpaid salary. Some of the elections money, if possible, when it comes to the actual election day, I can recoup. I can't recoup the other. 2021 so far, and I don't have the most recent election in, only have 30 extra hours on that, above the norm of their work week. I've got 231 so far in county clerk. Court work is increasing, elections are increasing. Since 2016, I've had 19 elections. Elections run about a three to four month cycle. I need, I need an assistant that can help with elections. We are busy training, this isn't where I can bring someone and say in four weeks or four months, they're going to be trained. It's not how it works. We are working, we are pushing it. And I was just talking to the county clerk in Grand Travers, that's also putting out a lot of work. We're losing people. We're losing people to lateral transfers, where they don't have the workload. We're also losing them. I'm not, she is across the hall where they can go and make $4 or $5 an hour more. She's lost three people in the last six weeks. And for one of the positions, she got one. County clerks all over, I think you're seeing it in equalizations, you're seeing it all over. We're pushing out a lot of work, we need, I need assistance on the county clerk side. I don't need assistance on the accounting side. We've got it, we've got it down, we're managing just fine. It takes a long time. Right now, Jen and I are, I spent, well, let me go back here. just shy of two years training someone to get them where they were starting to be comfortable with court, was not their thing, the transfer. Jen and I are doing all the court work, it is time-sensitive, we have to be Johnny on the spot. Cannot afford to make election errors. But we're at the counter, we're trying to train them. CPLs have increased now that there's no gun board. I personally do the CPLs myself. I generally will come in at night or on a Sunday to do them. I can't have confidential paperwork for those type of things laid all over. And in those cases, I'm a little reluctant to have people clicking under my name, approving CPLs for people to carry concealed pistols without me seeing it. It takes a long time to train people. The people that I had in place had grown into some of these positions. They had years of experience, so we would add a little bit more, a little bit more. It wasn't a big deal. To the new people, I had someone that I had for a couple of years that came in. Unfortunately, we were able to pick up the slack. We did some internal transfers in the building. Was absolutely shocked by the amount of traffic and the workflow. absolutely shocked by the amount of traffic and the workflow going through the office, landed to some family issues, was off a fair amount, and ended up having to retire. Minutes, minutes take a long time. There's only in the building probably now, Jen, Jen is taking a lot more minutes. Outside of Jen, the only people that had experience in this building, real experience with minute taking anymore, was Laurel, worked for me for 13 years, Trudy and myself. Takes a long time to produce a set of minutes after sitting in these meetings, even if you don't have discussion, let alone all the foul work that has to go through with it. So it is pushing the overtime, because when we're spending all day training to see these new people come in, and trying to get them comfortable to not overwhelm them, we just, we need another person to help absorb what we're doing between elections, between the courts, the assumed names, the marriage licenses, the general civil litigation, our assistance with the jury board. We're moving into an election year, next year, that's going to be at least three elections. We've got military discharge, now, we don't get a ton of military discharge records, it's still something that needs to be done. Notaries, peddlers, licenses, property lien removal, there's things that need to be taught, but you've got to have the time to do it. And when you're in that training mode during the day, and you've constantly got a flow of traffic, because we are one of the higher trafficked offices in the building, it stops you from what you're doing, trying to get that daily work done. So, I don't know what you want from me, that I can tell you that we need this. It is not for the accounting side, I think we're doing a fine job there, which is evidenced by our audits. But we need help in the front with those, the county clerk staff does not assist what goes on in accounting. My accounting staff, whether it be these two or others before them, will assist me on the other, on the other side with county clerk as far as answering phones. I give them tidbits, little cheats, sheets about how to answer marriage questions, as we are a marriage license capital, I, I think, with issuing them, and what, how to answer those questions. They help me a lot with juries. You may not see perhaps a lot of juries in the courtroom. I have one case, I have now summoned
Three times.
Three times, over 400 jurors for, and each time it's been canceled or postponed. But, we're talking about the prep, we're talking about prep to go through jury questionnaires to get those out, to answer all the questions that come in that they generate, people that don't want to be excused, people that wouldn't come out during COVID. No corresponding with the courts responding to them, and then two days before the trial, it's canceled, and then you have to take care of that again. It's all time consuming. As much as we'd like to think we're in a paper world, even the courts, we're still, or not in a paper world, we are still in a paper world. We just found out yesterday, working with the prosecutor and trying to work with IT and Grand Travers, all of our 1996 cases have, in the system, all were properly entered on our end, their system has changed them into 20, 2,000 cases, in 21 cases. The system doesn't recognize the difference between 1996 and 2021, because people are applying to set aside convictions because of the laws that have come into place. So all these systems aren't talking together. Yesterday, that took three hours of time. Well, that's three hours of work that has to be completed last night. We can't leave stuff in our court queue, we're trying to train, we can't just bring someone in. It's not a sad story, it's not a complaint. I bargained for it, I know what the work is, I don't mind the work, but you've expressed concern about my work hours. I can just tell you, and, and my, some of my staff can't keep working these hours, they're happy to do it. I've had staff over the years that wouldn't work overtime. I have staff that will pick up the ball and help to get it done, they know it's important. But when you look at these numbers, know that I'm also doing those too. So you have to look at them, and you need to double them. But this request is strictly for county clerk services, it is not impacted by finances at all. So I'm happy to answer questions, I am happy to produce documents, give you what you need, I'm happy to have you come in and watch what we do. So that's, if you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer or find out.
Thank you for that, to me, Michelle. Just a clarification. I believe you put a title to this position as an assistant executive?
I, I put, it was, it was the same, in the same category where like the mapping technician, the administrative legal secretary is. And I think that Chet had something in his office manager, like the MSU has, I was looking for something because of the work that I would expect of the position to be up a little bit.
Primarily for the courts, is that what you're asking?
Courts, election, help with training. It, it's similar to what you heard when Carol Stocking was in, because she faces the same thing about this constant training, trying to get manuals updated, and learning the office and helping to assist these, these other people. I mean, it may sound simple, and I, I have to tell you, I hope that's not a sign.
You told me on a wire something.
Training, court, elections, taking over some training.
Marriages, I mean, it's, it's everything, it's everything that we do. And because of the areas that we have been, you're putting out fires, as opposed to being able, in some areas, to be proactive. You know, there's nothing you can do about FMLA leaves. You know, during the pandemic, we couldn't get a temporary office assistant. I think since 16, we've had, not we, meaning me, because I don't do the hiring of them, I think there have been six temporary office assistants that have quit, one working as much as one day. I've had, Laurel has one, you know, that's currently helping her with minutes, and the other two seem to be pretty loyal to helping me. I've talked to a couple people to see if they'd be interested in applying, and they're thinking about it as long as they don't have to take minutes. That seems to be a common, that's, that's also why I lost one of my staff too.
Well.
Unfortunately.
Would it help if we looked at processes and efficiencies in the department, and looking at it in such a way, let's say, can we outsource minutes? Are there certain things that we can outsource?
It depends on what the statute is. It's just, we'll get later on in the discussion, I had put in, I, I followed the procedure, and I had Ron come in for software, APEC software, to help do with remote access, like assumed names, marriage license, and all of that. And I'm going to conference next week, and I'm hoping to talk, but I was talking to the vital statistics, and some of these things that you would like to be able to outsource, and things that you think can be timed, they're not compliant with the law. And there are some things, even with bringing in the temporary office assistants, the ones that I have are doing a great job, but we can't allow them access to CPLs, I certainly can't do that. I can't allow them to do marriages, births, deaths, because they have to have logins, I have to verify that they're.
We all understand that you have certain mandated requirements, and you have to, you have to operate under certain laws, different laws for different things, we understand that. The point that I'm trying to make is, would it be helpful if we looked at the processes to see how we can better perform?
Sure.
To make life easier for you.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that to you specifically, but if you would like to come in and observe, and you can see something, and can say why, I can explain, because, well, what have you thought about this? I'm.
Well, I go back to, I mean, when we were working elections, the simple thing, remember when I suggested that we verbalize the number on the machine?
I still use that in my training today.
It's a simple, it's a simple fix for a complex problem, because when the numbers aren't right, you know, it's everything.
And you know, that has become more complicated, just because of all the changes. You've got same-day registration now, you have local jurisdictions that don't naming county clerks, because voter rolls show greater than census numbers, when in fact, the voter rolls are the responsibility of the township clerks, but still, we get involved in this.
Right, that's what I'm, I'm kind of getting to. It gets very complex, each one of those things that you do is very complex, and all I'm asking is, you know, we should have a deeper dive.
Sure.
And take a look at how we can streamline processes, how we can better train staff, all of those things to enhance the departments, you know, create an environment for staff to be able to work more efficiently, and better at what they do, you know, to get better at what they do.
I, I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
The, the problem is, is when customer service has to be first.
Well, sure.
When trying to do whatever you can, so when you're trying to do it with that, something else is, is going. But I am not opposed to that at all. I would welcome any commissioner to come in there, to watch, to see, to offer their two cents.
Chair, I, I'm, can I respond to that? I don't know that that's the role of us to take a deeper dive in the clerk's office. Were you suggesting she take a deeper dive, or, I don't want to micromanage the clerk or the treasurer?
No, I, I, I don't disagree, but I think, you know, a department head is coming to us with several major issues, and I am making a suggestion that maybe the processes that we're utilizing may not be efficient. So, she's, the department head is in the position where they have to train, that's an area this board can deal with. What kind of training can we provide for the building, you might say? I, I'm talking.
I was just making sure that we weren't.
Things like that, no, of course.
And I didn't, I did not take it that, for this discussion, I didn't take it that way.
I'm looking for answers to assist in her operating her department efficiently. Maybe there's new, new programming out there, maybe there's new training out there, maybe there's more, can we find more assistance in just training, for example? I mean, I, I have to look at that.
Right.
We do currently have a budget, I do believe that we use, you know, we engage NMC to bring in certain trainers. That was my point, to help.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Russo.
And I can appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Rushen. Even if there, given there is a way that you, as department head, through whatever process, decide to, to find something that's more efficient, effective, the way your staff work, they're cross-trained, so that, as I've observed, as I've been in there, so that they can all help on the front, they can pick up the pieces, and even with adding efficiencies, that's not going to eliminate the need for more help.
It's not, but I, I'm not deaf to what Commissioner Rushen is suggesting at all. The thing is, is all county clerks, 83, process certified copies. There isn't, and it has to be processed a certain way.
Right.
Marriage licenses, a marriage license is in sustain, no matter where you go in the state of Michigan. Now, what you will find different, and I'll just bring up marriages just as an example, how some of the clerks interpret the law, and what they require to get a marriage license are very different. I can tell you, Grand Travers is very strict, and has very specific rules, to the point when, when an out-of-state couple comes to get married in Michigan, they have to apply for their license in the county in which they're going to be married. Bonnie and I both, if there's a three-day waiver, I think we've increased other clerks in the state, it's a $100 fee that was approved by the Board of Commissioners for preparation. We can never charge to waive the three days, but we can charge for expedited preparation. When she gets couples like that that come into her, she wants them to have their marriage license, that, she has a list of things. They'll say, we're 60 years old, what did we need our birth certificate for? She goes, well, that's my process. She goes, if you don't like it, go up and see Michelle in Williston County, she'll do your license for you right now. They'll say, okay, let's just go change county lines, and up they come. I said, well, where are you getting, well, we were going to get married here, but that clerk wanted our birth certificates, and we're from Georgia, and we didn't bring them. I said, oh, okay. This is what I need. Can you answer all my questions? They answer it, they take an oath, I sign it, I'll take the revenue, I'll issue the license. But there's, no, but I'm not, that's not falling on deaf ears, because we're always thinking about that. But, and there's no but, I mean, I have nothing to say.
But my point is, you still need more help. Because you're, the problem is, is the volume of the work, no matter how efficient you are, it takes a certain number of bodies to do it, and that's where you're here.
Well, and I'm fortunate, right, I'm fortunate right now with the elections. I do outsource some of my work to the administrator's office. She used to work for me, she ends up how to, she knows how to do a couple things I need help with. You know, it's, it's just the way it is. It works out well, it doesn't inconvenience her time, and the administrator's been good about this since they took my employee, but it works out.
Commissioner Al, there. I believe we have a couple of jobs as a commission. One is to manage our, our citizens' tax dollars, the other is to make sure that they are getting the best service they can for those tax dollars, and as such, that means that our job is to make sure that we have employees who are paid for what they do feel good about, how they are, I don't want to say paid, how they're, how they're valued. And then you'll have employees who stay, who are glad to serve, who work well together. For what Commissioner Rushen is saying, if, if Northwestern has, I also firmly believe, being, having been a department head, you're working all the time to perfect your processes. But it is also helpful sometimes to have another head in there. Like Commissioner Rushen said, sometimes somebody looks at something and says that you've done for 20 years, and says, could you do that? Long time ago, I was a manager between assignments, waiting for a new assignment, and I was sent to a few departments to do just that, just be another set of ears and eyes, talk to people. New ideas, new ways of looking at things. So if there was something at Northwestern, I don't know, Commissioner Rushen, if there is something, that might be something, in addition, that we could ask our department heads if they would like to, to benefit from that kind of second look.
I think I'm on that, because there is, we actually did that a couple years ago with Construction Code, Building Safety. We brought in a consultant, where they looked at the whole structure and the status and how they did things, and came up with a very good plan, they surveyed all of, everyone who got a permit last five years, got surveyed and so forth, and that was a very valuable process, and the board was gracious enough to approve the funding for that. So we have done that, then.
What kind of funding is involved in that?
I can't remember how much that was, it was not substantial.
So I.
I would say three, four thousand dollars, and they did a great job, but they do, they do customized programs, and actually, Michelle brought in at one time to do just in-house, the one-day staffing, training on how to work together. So, this board has been very, very proactive. I think every request that I brought in to do professional development through NMC has been approved, and so we're grateful for that. But yes, there is opportunities for that. And they do customize it based on what the needs are, so there's a possibility.
I think that's generally a good idea, if a department head, you know, requests that kind of thing.
And, and we've done that with senior services, we've done that with the Construction Codes, we brought in for some in-service training just for the clerk's office a couple years ago, so we've done that throughout the building.
Yeah, okay.
Did you have some?
I, I just, when you call us, well, when we I just, when you call us, well, when we go get to the part of the budget at one of our later meetings, when we go through, if you look at the line items, depending on how you feel about this today, then I'd want to come back and discuss special projects to see what your thoughts are, because I've had special projects on a certain track, thanks to Commissioner Rushden's suggestion a few years ago. I want to be very clear, though, even if you were to give me this, even if you gave it to me on a year's trial basis, because I think most of you know me well enough, if I don't need it, I'm not going to keep it. I just, I won't, I won't do that. It will not totally eliminate overtime. I need to be really clear about that. I can't control elections, I can't control court. I can't control that. The court schedule works on the court schedule, which is not line up with our schedule. Our motion days start at eight. You know, our last trial was gone to 11:00 at night, and I heard, I heard things we gave, went, why is Jen sitting in that courtroom at night with Michelle? Well, she needs to be trained in how to do a jury trial, and the only way she can be trained in a jury trial is to sit next to me, so I can explain to her what the judge needs, what this needs, and how we proceed with it. That's how people get trained. So will it help with overtime? Yes. Will it reduce my time and all the extra hours I'm doing? Yes, but it will not to 100% eliminate overtime. Will it help? Absolutely. But I just want to be clear, because I don't want to say, great, we could give her a person, and she's not going to have any more overtime. No. And I'm not fond of adopting comp policies. I am not fond, and this is just for my office, it's not critiquing other offices, for my own offices, I'm not fond of comp time, because we create comp banks, and it means more time that people have to take off when you're already trying to have them, and depending on the union contract they're in, if they don't use their personal days, they lose them. They can sell back vacation days, which very few in this building do, but you've just added more time. I've watched people, actually not in my offices much, I've watched other departments not take vacation, and I watched one person recently lose, I think it was 240 hours of vacation time. And do I just keep that? So I don't know, I always report it to the administrator. I don't like to see that, but there's, you know, it is what it is. But if you'd like more information, I'm happy to give it to you. So.
I was wondering about the other two technology things. I mean, did you want to talk about those at all? You know, I think this Fiddler is one.
Your software request.
Oh, I just have the one.
Just the one, because I was going to say, the only one that I saw was for the, it was $7,000 plus $5,000.
Plus $5,000. And Grand Travers County just installed that, and it's a way for people to remotely do things. But I've also, since I got that information, I like it because it offers an online indexing system, and I'm really torn when I look at that. I know that Bonnie and a couple other clerk registers have installed it, but I've also was talking to Ron, and depending on what you do with IT, I would like to think that, who's the company that helps us sometimes?
Safety Net.
Safety Net.
Safety Net. I was hoping that if someone like that comes in, they can help do a few things that we need that could enhance the website presence, as opposed to this. I like the features of this, and Ron's come in and seen the demonstration just last winter, because we had thought that maybe we could do it under some of that federal funding because of the shutdown, because it would have enhanced it. I just, I need to go see it again to make sure it's really appropriate to try to push with you to get that approved.
Well, and it says there's a $5,000 installation fee, but they waived that for $7,000 a year?
All your software has yearly maintenance fees, and that's one of the cheaper ones.
I just thought.
And some counties use that, some use a company called Cherryland, and some of those clerks really like it, you know.
I'm not clear on what that software is for. You said indexing. What are we indexing?
Indexing, assumed names, marriages, debts, it's an indexing system, so that you can go online. Right now, our circuit court is indexed, we've been online with them since, with Grand Travers since 1992. And so you can go online and look up and see if certain court cases have been filed, and you can see back entries, you cannot see pleadings. This would make it so people can go, if they want to file an assumed name, they can go, they can print it out, then they can mail it to us. It allows on marriage licenses, where they can fill out the document, then when they come into the office, it's already pre-printed, and we print it out, we do the notarization, and then it moves on to an indexing system. Our indexes are not online. It's not a difficult thing to accomplish, but we need to have someone in-house with the skill set to help us do that. I'm not a computer person.
Right, and I just wasn't sure, so that's actually taking a step out of the office. And you don't have to have that clerk behind the counter walking them through the document, they can navigate online.
You do some, because some won't use it.
Yes, I understand that. Yeah, there's always those.
It's a service, because it would just enhance it, and what I'm afraid of is that, are there too many people that are already doing it that way? I really want to analyze what the cost benefit of it is. I still think it's good, but.
You're not ready.
Even if it was approved, which I'd like it to be approved, so if I decide, I can move forward with it, but I'm not going to do it just because you say, Michelle, this sounds good. I want to make sure it's the right thing, because I don't want to come back to you any year and say, you know, I bought this, and this is just a dud, because the clerks are very loyal to what they have. Ottawa County has this program, and they really like it, but their clerk's office is also spread over three places. I'm anxious to see how Grand Travers really likes it. Cherryland is tempting, Big Rapids, I can't think of what the county that is. She uses Cherryland and really likes it. I've had Ron see it, and we both just looked at the screen like, huh. It seemed like a lot of money for.
A little. Well, I just wasn't clear on how, you know, what job it would perform in the department.
There's kind of technologies offer some, but their costs are extremely expensive.
So just to clarify, are you talking about Fiddler Technology?
I think she is.
I think they have a Fiddler.
Because on this memo we posted, it says Fiddler Technology.
Do they have Fiddler in there somewhere?
For $20,000.
I call it Apex.
Yeah.
He is part of, that's his parent, that's his parent company.
Okay.
That's right, it is his parent, and I put up to 20, because I want to go to this conference, and if I see a vendor that I think is better, I wanted that flexibility. So it is Apex.
I was getting confused, because he was talking 20, and I could see where it was seven plus five.
And he's happy to come and give demonstrations. He gave one to Ron and I just several months ago.
So it's the same, just a different name.
It's the same, I'm sorry. Fiddler's the company Apex.
Well, and does it actually do notarizing online? I thought I read that in here somewhere, and I didn't, I thought that would be.
You can apply for your notary. So one of the things that, Michelle, in the book, that we also do notaries in the office. So if you're going to be a notary in the county, you have to physically come to us and give an oath. And so it's a form that they can fill out. When we looked at the software, right now, marriage licenses can take up to 20 minutes as we're asking all those questions that are on the birth certificate, and this gentleman had let us know that they can view that online, they save it, it gets uploaded to us, and there's a touchscreen on the other side when they come in, so there's no contact between the customer and us. Everything's done on a kiosk. And then, so your 20 minutes is now taken five, you reviewed it, it's printed, notarized, and the application is now started, to then start to process the marriage.
So it's not notarizing anything online?
No, we all do online notarization in the office, and we did not accept it through the pandemic.
All right. Thank you. Were there any other questions for, for, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So then that brings us then to the Board of Commissioner's request, and, oh, no, we're at Park and Rec here.
Yeah, I don't think there's anyone here from Parks and Rec, but basically, I covered that their request was different and separate from mine, but kind of saying the same thing. I believe they're asking for funding to bring in some administrative assistance.
Yeah, and I looked at it, that's, the narrative is on page 139 of the book, and then there, when they, I was just in the letters, page 140, and then they have several other things. I mean, I don't know.
We probably want to bring them in specifically, either Chairman or somebody to explain that, or we have a couple members here that's.
Were they notified of this meeting today?
Yeah.
But they have that capital outlay on one page, 142, that was the thing I was a little concerned about. Yes.
And I'll refer to Melinda, because I know longer on the Parks and Recreation, but the workload for the Parks and Recreation Commission drastically changed when they went from one commission to one commission and three committees. And I'm not sure that, that if you operated with one commission, you'd have the same personnel needs you have as well. I think the committee structure creates a lot of, a lot of issues.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I kind of alluded to that the other day, that the committee structure solved some issues, but then it's created others. And as I said the other day, my suggestion would be to go back to the standard full Parks and Recreation committee meeting, and dissolve the individual parks committee meetings. I think we're at a place now where we're good for a number of years, that we know what each park needs now. We know what their individual problems are. And so if we go back to the full, full structure of the board and move our meeting times so that they're not middle of the day, if we could get some assistance with the, with the administrative portion through a stipend or whatever, if it worked during the business hour, I think that that would solve, would be one to two evenings a month, by evenings probably right after work, right after the workday, for a couple hours, we could knock out everything that had to be done with parks. And we could do it with a stipend and all as a committee of the whole. That's going to be my suggestion to Parks and Recreation Board when we discuss it. And I don't know, as far as the capital outlay, I think the idea was to just lay everything out there that the needs are for the parks. As I said, we kind of know what the desire is for the parks, we kind of know what the needs are for the parks, and we want, we know what the wants are for the park. So we've just been generally picking away what I consider one big project a year at one of the parks. The next year, it will be the next park, and try to knock one big thing out. And that's where we are. So that's kind of a list of where we want to go. We will be revisiting a lot of those as it goes. Does old settlers need playground equipment? It's not a matter of really needing it. Do they want it? Yes. Would it be used? Yes. And would it be, is it highly desirable? It is, because that playground equipment is really quite ancient. In fact, the swing set's got a bent bar because it got hit by a tree in the 2015 storm, and we just kind of, yeah, it's doing okay, leave it. My, and there's some other bigger concerns with the old settlers' parks, such as, as I watched during the old settlers' picnic, the swing set is right there, there's sand in the swing set, you've got kids on the swing set, you've got children playing in the sand by the swing set, and the cars pull right up in park where that dust is right there. There's no barriers, there's absolutely no barriers between the playground and, that's another story. So that's where we are. Do, does parks expect to get their full capital outlay? I don't think so, but like many people, it was asked for, because that's where they want to go with projects.
All right, so that, I think then we can move on then to the number two, which would be a Board of Commissions' request for a finance department and a human resources department. And I think you had a suggestion for it before.
Yeah, well, I did. I laid out a couple of meetings ago what I thought that might solve this situation. And if we, since we are going to have a new administrator next year, if we were to combine a new administrator with some financial expertise and slide our financial department over under that person, that would lighten the clerk's load on a lot of the financing. And then, of course, there's the same with the human resources duties, but I, that was what my suggestion was at the last meeting.
Commissioner Allen, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from the people doing the work, about what they know and have experienced is the best way to do the work, and what is needed to meet the needs of our citizens. I believe it's, we have, what, 125?
27, I think.
27 employees. I believe that human relations skills are imminently important when you are managing a staff, because our county serves its citizens the best when all of our employees and our departments are working well and working well together and meeting the needs of our people. And that's really our job. We've got to have somebody with people's skills. And left brain, right brain, that thing is very, very real. Financial skills are very different than people's skills. So I believe we have a system that works really well. I like the idea of somebody doing the finance, being an elected official, who's under a microscope and knows it, can't be subject to political whims, can't be subject to, they are just, they are reporting to the people. And I think that's an important, an important role. And I like the idea that it's, that it's done by an elected official. So I would, I would support our administrators' expressed need for a little more help doing some human relations tasks as part of the administrator's office, since they already do our personnel. We have people who know what needs to be done, have done it, and have the skills in the background to do more. So I would support our administrators' suggestion. And leaving finance right where it is with an elected official who's accountable to the people of our county.
Commissioner Westall.
Yeah, I won't speak long, because I've spoken to this before, but I don't see how the proposal is on the table now, so it's a clerk's office issue that the clerk just shared with us. I favor the model presented to us by the administrator. Once again, things are going well financially, things are going well human resource-wise, let's not reorganize, and let's not add additional bureaucracy. So I, I would be opposed to what's on the table now.
Well, yeah, well, I had heard what she had said previously, and we had that discussion. And so Commissioner Rushden contacted a human resources person, and it's in Lillimah County, and it's a, it's a big company, but they're stationed at the, they're already in the building. And so I went and met with them, actually, we both did, and they, they would really, they would be, it would outsource human resources. And then if we, if we went with a financial administrator.
And then if we, if we went with a financial administrator, then we would have those issues, and it would take human resources, any issues or problems would actually be taken out of the building, and they would have an office in there, they could set it up, depending on how we wanted to do it. But it actually, I thought, made, made a lot of sense, and it would work very well. I mean, it, this is just a proposal, and I didn't get any numbers or anything, and we just explained what had been proposed and what had been thought about, you know, and how the, how we could, and asked them, you know, if they could help us out, if we went that way. So, you know, I just, I just thought it is, it's a company stationed in Lillimah County, they are very, very well-known throughout the nation, and they do HR exclusively. So I thought if we outsourced that, and we moved the financials to the administrator's office, and the higher administrator was in financials, we would take away what Commissioner Algar talked about, the politicalness that, that an elected official can get involved in, in dealing with, whether it's finances or human resources or something. You know, I see that as, as politics can affect it and does affect it many times from elected officials, and we would remove that from there.
Can I respond to that when you're done? I'm sorry.
Well, Commissioner Lauder.
Since you brought up something I said.
Yeah, well, I mean, you'll get to it, but Commissioner Lauder has her hand, had her hand up even before I spoke. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I kind of interrupted you. That wasn't nice.
So you said you don't have any numbers yet?
Don't have any numbers.
No, okay. But they could get those relatively?
Wait, they're, they're working on it, you know.
Okay.
That's what they said. I thought they would have them by today, but, you know, it was only.
Okay. And then, so something you said makes a lot of sense to me, and I, and I really like this idea. So would they come and give us, you know, we would be able to talk to them and hear the proposal and ask them questions, how it would work, and who else he served, and that sort of thing. Okay. I'd like to see that. Something else you said really makes a lot of sense to me, and I was going to touch on this, and that's that it would take away a lot of the politicalness of, of what goes on. Because as I said in the past, I think it's been very unfair that we have had county employees have to go through what they've had to go through in some of these situations. And I really appreciate the, the input. I know we're not really back there, but we kind of are. As I said before, when I supported this motion a couple of months ago to, to make the independent offices, I said I liked the idea that the clerk would be able to concentrate on just clerking. And even today, it, what I hear today just absolutely solidifies that. It's, it's so complex, and I, that's what I'd like to be able to see our county clerk, whoever is in that seat, be able to concentrate on is just the clerking. And by saying just, that's a big just, because it's a big job, it's huge. So, and, and I would be, and I, and I like her idea of the one-year trial basis. So even with this, I'm not opposed to even looking at that position just because of the workload, her statutory duties with just the minutes in, in the courts alone is, is enough, I think in my mind, right now. So this being said, by contracting, we wouldn't, I'm guessing, it would be considered a contract, correct? Right? They don't bring us an employee that we hire. Okay. So by contracting would really be a very good financial situation for us, and, and at least for a year or two as a trial basis also. I'd be willing to do that. And then by bringing in a, a administrator with the financial and having the accounting department be on to the administrator, that's not going to add a whole lot either. So it's a very fiscal proposal. And we, one that we've just about beat to death, and I just suggest we move forward with it today.
Commissioner Algar. I know, but she had.
No, no, no.
I brought up her name. She wanted to respond to it.
Okay, so I have other points too, but I will just address what you responded to. So you said two things. One, somehow that there were political things going on, and, and what I heard the clerk say is she's just paying bills according to, according to mandates. There's nothing political about that, she's just paying bills. So I wonder about that statement. Also, the HR suggestion, I'm, I guess I would need to know exactly what they do, because that misses the point of what an administrator does day-to-day onsite, he manages people. And an off-site HR department, they might do hiring and firing and, and programs and that kind of thing, and that's all real valuable stuff. But the administrator is managing people and departments and solving problems and resolving disputes day-to-day onsite, that kind of thing you can't outsource. So I think there are two, and that's where, that's where the people's skills comes in.
Commissioner Soodas.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm sorry. But, but could you answer that question? Or, go ahead. I had a question, two questions.
I'm not sure what the question was, but as far as it's, it's an elected official, things can be taken politically, what they do. However they decide, someone's going to say that's a political decision. If, if it was a, let's say, a Democrat is elected as the register of deeds, and the clerk makes a decision against the register of deeds, even though it's all by all the books, people will say that it's political. I'm not saying she's doing anything political, it's made political because we have, we are parties. And that's what happens often.
That's going to happen anyway.
Well, well, it can, yes, but, but if you take that away from being an elected official, it becomes much less.
I doubt that, but so what, so what exactly would the HR people do? What, what kinds of services?
What we decide.
Commissioner Soodas.
Okay, my, my first, I've got kind of a series of comments, and I know I haven't spoken yet, so my first is a reaction. This model assumes we have an administrator with a financial background, a comptroller or someone of that nature. We haven't discussed the characteristics that are important to us for our administrator to have. I would say that our current administrator embodies what I would like to see, because he has excellent HR skills. And that has been shown out by the record that we have of no huge problems over time in his ability to facilitate very effectively. And the connections he has, the understanding he has, the administrative skills he has. So I, I don't sign on to the idea of having a comptroller as our administrator. And outsourcing HR activities, I think it's, one, we haven't discussed it, and I'm not convinced in this very short comments that have been made, that that's the way to go, which is if we do this, that's the way to go. So that was number one. Number two, I support the idea, I mean, I keep coming back to the same things. We're throwing around a lot of innuendos here, saying that there have been issues, there have been problems. But we as community, as, as county commissioners, if there has been someone who's come to one of us, why hasn't that person been sent to our administrator to say there is a problem? I mean, who, where are these big, who, who are these people? You know, not that they should be, in fact, I would counsel against pointing that out here, but, but there's this alluding to that there are these problems, that nothing is documented. As I said weeks ago, there is no data supporting that we need to have for a hundred and twenty-seven employees to contract out HR activities. And, and the finances are being handled very, very well. So why are we fixing a system that isn't broken? It doesn't make any sense to me. Let's move forward, keep things as they are, decide on the traits and the qualities and the skills and attributes that we want our next administrator to have, and then make decisions. If it does necessitate then outsourcing on HR because that individual isn't going to have those skills, or it does necessitate something different, we can do that. But this is, is growing bureaucracy, it truly is, and for no good reason. There has been no data presented to this body. And all these weeks of this has have been discussed. It's just a proposal of something we'd like to do, it's because we're growing bigger. Well, we're not. We don't have more responsibilities, we don't have more income, we don't have more employees. We haven't grown. So why are we doing this when everything is functioning fine? The clerk's office operates according to the rules, and I would have to disagree with you. Everything anyone does is considered political if they're, if they are an elected official, us included. We may be making the best decisions for our community, it's still going to be, by someone, considered political. So there's no way around that, and to remove a department function on the basis that it's going to get rid of that perception, it won't. I agree with Commissioner Algar on that. It won't. It's always going to be, no matter where it is, it's going to be considered political by somebody. So I am, I am not supportive of outsourcing, and I'm not supportive of removing the department. And I hope we move forward and discuss who we want to replace an individual who's done an outstanding job all these years, and I hate to see it leave because, so that's my point.
Commissioner Russell.
Well, I won't restate everything that Patricia just said, but again, outstanding audits and no, no, no grievances. We're trying to solve a problem that we haven't identified. What makes our organization so effective and so good is the staff, the people that work here, the people that supervise the staff. That's human resources. The most important thing we have in our, in our, in our resources, the whole, the whole value of our institution, we're going to farm that out to somebody that's going to recruit when we have vacancies, going to fire when somebody needs fired, they're going to have the forms filled out, but isn't he going to wander around these halls every day and be a team leader? We need a team leader. If you're going to farm out something, farm out finances, but we don't have an issue with finances. We don't even have a staffing issue with finances. But we cannot destroy this organization by saying the part of this organization we don't care about is the people that work here. That is human resources. The most valuable resource we have are our human resources. There are horror stories out there about organizations and businesses that have farmed out their human resource operation to somebody else, and, and lose all of that, all of that, all of that value of, of the team. This is a, this is a bad idea, a bad, bad idea. Thank you.
Mr. Rushton.
I, I listened to all the comments. One thing I hear is that everybody has a different perspective on what HR means, what And I have to confess that I too did not understand the whole scope of what an HR department does. As Commissioner Bonix said, I reached out to a very large organization, a national organization, that is local, hire local people. And we sat down and had a conversation, and I specifically told them upon contact I had zero authority to engage their services. However, was interested in what services that they provide, which is a very large plethora of services. This board can pick and choose what services they would or would not like to have. And when we talk about HR, and we talk about an administrator, I think that's really two different things. I think what this board is looking for is the interpersonal skills that an administrator should have to deal with day-to-day in this building, much like Chet does. Chet has interpersonal skills. He, as the administrator, has certain authorities granted to him by this board to act in certain ways, to hire, to fire, as, as well as our elected officials. So I think we're confusing an HR department with an administrator who has interpersonal As far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, HR is currently under the administrator's office, right? If we outsource, HR will still be under the administrator's office. He will have oversight, he will work hand-in-hand with the HR department in managing the HR program for the county. Instead of having it, the administrator, the clerk's office, and our employees have to go from one office to another office, the administrator coordinates with the HR department. The HR department may be frontline for a complaint. They may be able to resolve a complaint if it's a simple issue, and if not, they go to the administrator. However it's set up, but I just really think that we're not differentiating between what an HR department does. An HR department does a plethora of things. If you want them to hire and fire, they can. If you want them to do payroll, they can. If you want them to do MERS, they can. There's a whole host of things that they can do. So when I was initially talking to the organization, I had asked them to, if they would be willing to come to the board, because I told them it was a discussion that had to be done at the board level, it had to be presented to the board, so that we could have a clear understanding of what the services that they would be able to provide for the county would be. We talked about alleviating the work that our clerk is not mandated to do, she's not mandated to do that portion, she's willingly done it over the years, but that's not a mandated duty for the clerk. Does she do it perfectly? Probably not. Nobody does it perfectly. But the thing that I found out with outsourcing, not only do you have people who are specifically trained in the areas with the laws, I'm told they have five attorneys on staff that we would have access, unlimited access to for any HR issues. There's just a whole host of things, and I'm not going to share everything that was shared with me at the time, because quite frankly, I won't remember it all. But I personally think they had talked about having portals for the employees to access so they can go to their own pension program and look at it, they can inquire, they can ask questions on the portal, there's a whole host of things, much like the clerk wants There's a whole host of things, much like the clerk wants to do with her forms or Register of Deeds wants to do the digitizing. So it would allow the employees an opportunity to actually go to their own pension plan and look at it. So I think there are some advantages to consider when it, when it comes to HR. Now originally, I think Commissioner Robbins presented to this board that we create a separate finance and a separate HR. Maybe that's not quite the right fit. I hear complaints about growing government. We're all concerned about growing the budget. So it's looking at those efficiencies. It's looking how we can provide a better service to the people that work here. And there's always a political element, as mentioned, when you've got two different parties and a lot of things can happen in that regard. And as Gwen says, it may always be political. But when you take that outside of the political arena, it's just business. It's business that our employees can, they can engage in doing their own business. They can look at their own stuff, just like you do when you go to your bank. You don't have to go into the bank to see what your balance is. You can write checks, you can pay bills, blah, blah, blah. It's the same thing. They can interact with their own. There is also an opportunity to bring somebody in-house if you want somebody in-house part time, certain hours a week. There's a whole host of things that can be done. But as far as the administrator, I think you're absolutely correct. One of the qualifications should absolutely be interpersonal skills. We're going to need that here. So I think we should consider this. I think we should get a little bit more information about it and move forward.
Right, Willie, I just wanted to say that when we were at the health department meeting, they actually outsourced their HR. They actually named the company and I, I talked with Doty and Michelle Klein about it and they actually used Guardian Company. That's not the one that, that we talked to, but, but that is how they do their HR and they seem to think it works well. Go ahead.
And I, I appreciated Deb's overview. Unlimited attorneys, people on site if we want them, all of these services. Sounds expensive, but we've yet to say why we need it. We have yet to say what we have that we're trying to fix. And that's the place to start. If it's overwork, that's one issue. If it's customer service complaints, that's another issue. If it's grievances, that's another issue. If it's bad audits, that's another issue. We don't have one problem on the table and yet you want to have unlimited attorneys, people part-time on-site, a whole new corporation working for us. That doesn't come for nothing. That doesn't come for nothing. And I heard Melinda say, but we can also provide a staff person for the clerk's office. We ought to do that because the clerk said she needs it, but not for the finances, not for the human resources. So I ask us, please, before we continue to talk about these big ideas about outsourcing all of our, all of our problems, let's see what problems we're outsourcing. And I don't know one. I haven't heard one and I've asked for it for several months and nobody has come forward with any single one, except we're concerned about how hard the clerk works. And she and the administrator have put forward the proposal to solve that. So taking administration of the most important function we do for staff and saying, we're going to put it in the hands of some other corporation, that we will then have a constant turnoff of their staff, that doesn't, that doesn't. So let's first please, Deb, Melinda, Rick, tell me the problem you want to solve.
Efficiency.
Commissioner Lotner.
So just very, very quickly, that all sounds wonderful, but I believe the original proposal was a $10,000 increase to the budget in just upgrading the current position in the administrator's office. And that was estimated to solve. We haven't identified the problems, but that would cover the HR. So $10,000 versus what I doubt they're talking $10,000, this corporation. But we have to contrast that with the administrator's proposal of a $10,000 total cost.
Commissioner Lot.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're mid-August, a month away from finalizing our budget. What do you need from us today to move forward on this? What shall we direct the finance department to create? A budget for HR and set a, I mean, attempt, it's got to be a draft because we don't know the number yet, we don't know the changes. But if we contract, I think you'd be looking at a solid number for that department. We need to get that in the budget.
Well, if we're through discussion here, you know, then we would go to whether we want to put these in or not.
Yeah.
You know, we have to do each one of these.
As I finish, because all, all I'm hearing, as I said, I've heard month after month, just a bunch of regurgitation and I'm trying to just move things forward. So by consensus, if you want, wish. So that budget, which would just be probably a solid number, I'm guessing for, for now, a draft solid number, whatever number we choose to put in there or no number yet, but potential.
Create the budget.
Yeah. And then, yeah. And then do we, should, really for the administrator, maybe not plug a number, leave the administrator number as it is for now so that allows probably better negotiation? I'm guessing so, just leave the administrator.
A point of order. Mr. Chairman, you just said the thing that's correct here. I realize that Commissioner.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order is I got the floor.
Commissioner Lotner is.
Do I not have, excuse me, do I not have the floor?
You do, but she, she's calling to point of order. I want to see what it, hear what it is first.
Yes. You just said what Commissioner Lotner is, is saying to be done is based on whether this, this board agrees to move in that direction. I, I would ask that we first determine what we want to do and then if Commissioner Lotner wants to list out what she sees as what should be done, that's fine. But right now, it's simply what she wants. We don't, we're not doing it based on what the board wants.
So the point of order is wrong because I mentioned a consensus and I'm asking you to look for your consensus and move forward. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wrong, but thank you.
No, in that, there was no point of order. She, that's all she was not saying anything was going to be. She was just saying we need to, she wants to move on. And so.
But she wants to move on. Then move forward with consensus.
And that, that's why we would look at these discussion items and we can decide which one we want to talk about first because I think we're ready to start going into the discussion items. I think we've been through them all. Was there any other comments, things that commissioners wanted to make? So, I mean.
May I suggest something, maybe? It's almost noon for lunch. I give them brief update on the IT.
Okay.
And then we can break for lunch and then come back and discuss other issues. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, yeah. I think because it might be some long discussions.
Yeah, yeah, something to do. So just on IT, as you know, Ron is verbally discussing retiring April 2022. So that's not that far away. As you know, from my updates and so forth, I have it in dialogue with the company that we are in partnership right now, Safety Net, about exploring a long-term greater possibility. I also, because it was in the record ego last week, had discussions with Grand Jarvis County. Both are preliminary. I don't have a plan for them. The one thing that I told both of them is we need a full-time person here every single day to deal with IT needs. That's the basic needs. Beyond that, we may have a partnership that they will handle the bigger projects as we do with Safety Net. But the days of having one staff person handle all of the IT needs for the whole county are gone. They've been gone for several years. And so this is the next transition part. At some point, I will have proposals, I'm guessing, from Safety Net and from Grand Jarvis County. And as soon as I get those, we'll have a dialogue and update for you. But Ron will be here through April. But I told them, we need proposals fairly soon and I would love to have a full plan in place that's approved by the board of our debate discussions by the end of this year. So we're going to implement it next year. But I don't know when I'll have proposals or updates or if we even will have proposals for them. This is a very complex issue. More and more companies aren't going to outsourcing technology needs. It's not a unique situation. But I think the one thing I've heard from employees and I agree that we need a full-time technician here every day. And then we need the bigger picture to do with the big, major projects. But not one person is going to have all the skills to handle all the IT needs, the network needs, the security needs, everything. And so we're kind of going to the way that many counties, and this is not unique for counties. I talked to several county administrators and I have another meeting Monday with county administrators and a lot of counties are looking at this option because many of them have IT departments that are single source or people are looking at retiring and so forth. So this is a trend, not just locally, but statewide and nationwide. So I don't have any specific numbers for you already, proposals yet, but we are trying to be proactive and trying to get some options to you as soon as we can.
Mr. Lot.
This is more of a question, either for Chet or Michelle. I think it's more a Michelle question. But does Ron have comp time that he can use or vacation time that he can use? And if his expiration, retirement date is April 22, does that mean he's going to be off-campus but technically employed?
It will be, it'll be between him and Chet.
Yeah, we're still, April, he does not have a firm date. He suggested April, but there's flexibility. He has not sent an official letter saying this is his last.
But your question is, is April 10th is last day in the building and is he going to be on vacation until May 20th?
Yeah, I mean, it could be like most.
Okay, so, but technically speaking, we're looking at, are we looking at replacing him April 10th or are we looking at replacing him?
You would replace him at the time he, regardless if he's on vacation at the time he's physically out of the building.
And we probably would need a transition period too.
Or the four. So he said where you're taking April.
Yeah, it's just, I don't have those details yet. I want to keep you all updated on what we're at least exploring.
Mr. West.
I, I like, I just want to comment. I like the idea of outsourcing some of the technology functions and I think lots of places are doing that and it, it brings in some talent. But we must be careful then because we've talked about outsourcing maintenance, outsourcing technology, outsourcing administration, outsourcing finance, outsourcing human resources. You don't have anything left if you're not careful. And we need to make sure that we outsource those things that we're talking about doing because we need a talent pool like technology. And then do those things internally that, that make good sense for good team management.
Yeah, and I would agree, but technology is one of the things that I don't think there's much controversy about, that I think it's best suited for private and public sectors to outsource. For example, Grand Jarvis County has eight people. They all have different skills. So when a problem occurs, it's not one person that fixes it. They go to the director and he is, he assigns it whoever has that skill. With Safety Net, we have different people here coming in depending on what the circumstances are. So, so to use that example, when there's an issue with a server versus a security, I'm just making these up, or sorry things, Safety Net decides who, who on their team has the expertise to fix that problem.
So why, what is the need in-house that we have to have somebody here five days a week?
I'd say more of the technical, the mundane things, installing new computers, maybe software updates, equipment issues, things that are.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if we actually do really need somebody full-time in the building for that.
I'm looking at that as a more of a, I don't want, kind of an entry-level position, more of a tech person versus someone with the expertise, someone that can handle the day-to-day duties. And Michelle agree, there probably are things on a daily basis that people struggle with. Computers lock up, there may be software updates, things that are not, you don't have to have a, well, I shouldn't say, you have to have technical expertise. It does not have to be at a higher.
You don't have to be a scientist.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's a good way of looking at it.
I'm seeing nodding heads up there too.
Yeah, I think everyone agrees.
They all use Ronald.
They all would like a full-time person here five days a week. Matter of fact, I just got a number that I haven't shared with you from the sheriff. They would like their own IT person full-time next door, between the sheriff and the IT. They want a full-time person next door just to handle their needs. Because once again, that's getting much more complex with 911 and the sheriff and all the security issues and the BICS issues with the courts also. There are constant challenges and it, sometimes it's almost comical because I won't mention any names, but certain judges get very upset when they can't remember the password, you know?
I know which judge that is.
I won't mention any names, but you know, there are constant needs of things that occur every day at different offices. So I'm looking, and once again, this is the beginning stages. So someone with a basic expertise to come and handle the day-to-day routine things and then have a backup for the major things. And that could be a team of people. It probably will be a team of people. I just can't imagine that we could hire someone, one person, to handle everything. And Ron will tell you, he's not an expert in all these areas and that's why we brought in Safety Net and it's working out well because Ron knows what his skills are and what he does not have the expertise in, and that is handled by someone else. And it's worked out well. But you look at the courts and you look at 911, which is now very complex. When you look at the software the sheriffs are using, it's much more advanced than it was even three, four years ago. And network security is a big issue now. So you'll be hearing more about that. Just want, this is just an update. At this point, I don't have a proposal, I'm not asking for anything.
Well, we, we have to put, we should have to put something in the budget for that.
Yeah, I'm guessing we will for this, by the time we finalize our budget, we should have some proposal. I think we're getting close with some of the proposal numbers and so forth.
We have to, we have to budget Ron's position and his salary as is. There's, that's just words that he's going to leave. We have to.
But at some point, we want to adjust that budget. And just for the administrator's budget, just so you know, I plan to be here in 2022. So when you look at budget for that position, that will, I'll probably be here most of the year, if not all of the year. So when you go forward, you got to think long-term beyond that.
So we don't have to worry about.
No. But it's a good, but it is good to have discussions sooner versus later because it really does impact your discussion about finance and, and HR.
Right.
I did call Chef, Anne Zorgan, said we'd all be coming over there at noon.
All right. Well, I'd say we take a break here, come back at, I don't know, like 12:30 or would that be enough time?
Twelve thirty and one.
How about quote? Did you have a statement?
Well, I, I just, I, I took a moment and called Doty because I thought I understood what they were doing in HR and I was afraid there might have been some misunderstanding. And they, they are only using that firm to update their policies and to make them legal, which is something we've already done. But, and they also, there's so many changes in the laws, they rely on them. And she says it's about $500 a year. That's all they do. She said, oh no, we wouldn't outsource HR, we keep that in-house. Doty does that. They've got a process that they go through and it, you know, in terms of if you have a complaint, where it starts and what it, what they do going through the chain. So I thought that was what they had and that kind of shocked me when you said that, but they don't. She said, no, 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 we would never outsource HR.
Okay, so I misunderstood their communications with you.
And where was that?
Michelle, do you have any questions for us or anything?
Well, it, it depends. Where are we starting on the suggestion? I got to keep notice to what you're doing for budget purposes. Are we going back to the Register of Deeds and coming down?
Well, I was just going to let the board decide what they wanted to talk about first by their motions or what they wanted to and, you know, we just cross them off as we decide each one.
Okay, well, I'd, I'd like to reserve if it's permissible, if you're going to get back to this HR discussion.
We can do that one first if that would help you with the budget.
I'm a tad speechless with the thought of outsourcing this and I have very big concerns for the employees of the county because I'm not sure what your plan is to know because like Commissioner Rushton said, she wasn't really sure about what HR did. And she met with the company and she heard all about the plethora of things that they can do. And I, I talked to her just briefly. First of all, we have employee. of things that they can do. And I talked to her just briefly. First of all, we have employee portals. All of our employees have portals for their MERS, for all of their investments. We do all that. I mean, we have that available to them. They're all well aware of that. We have a contract. We pay $125 a month that handles all of our COBRA. There's mandatory letters under law that have to be sent to employees upon hiring and upon leaving. They also administer our COBRA payments. When you, I feel like we're throwing dynamite here on some very fiscally conservative things that protect our finances for years and years and years. And I'm really concerned with how this HR, if that's, if there's enough votes on this floor to do that, how does that impact our health insurance? Do these companies, I don't know of any county that outsources HR, but that doesn't mean there isn't some. I, I am going to be asking next week. I don't know of any that do this. I mean, are you looking at Blue Cross? Are you looking at 1094s? Are you looking at 1095s? Are you looking at the F-65? Things that were already protected. We have Cole Stoker. They handle our labor relations. We have multiple union contracts. Are you looking at an HR firm to handle your, um, timesheets with no oversight, making sure that they're implemented according to county policy, according to those union contracts? Um, there's just, there's concern. I'm really concerned about this health insurance, because I can tell you that outside agencies do not understand what we do here. I don't care how much experience they've got. What we do with our health insurance to a lot of people is very scary, and we've got a wonderful system going for these employees. And if that scale is tipped, you will never get back what you have. They have told us, if we burst that bubble, we're done. We're not like the outside world, where we're bringing employees that are paying $300 or $400 a month on their health insurance. We're self-insured. I've heard, even heard agents say, you can't do it. We're doing it. We pay an agent to make sure. We're watching those funds. We're doing those, those transfers to make sure this is balanced. Um, I, I just, I have some concerns. And I think you need to be aware of that, especially when it comes to health insurance. And we have, now granted, the one contract is just yearly on the health insurance, 1094, 1095, that needs to be done. Um, I've worked with outsourcing of payroll before. We used to do it when CAP was here, but all that work is done internally. All they do is they print the checks and send them back to you. But everything, to make sure everything is, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, it's done internally. You've got to have oversight. Um, this is not, I'm just, I'm just letting you know my concern. I'm very concerned for the employees. I'm very concerned for your health insurance if this is the way you choose to go, because there's not anything in what I've mentioned here that's not being compliant with the law. I just, I feel like I've got to tell you that, you've got to be very careful with this. It's getting done. Um, we work with the attorneys, we work with the auditors, and we work with companies that specialize in this four-county government, because we don't want to violate those things. So any companies, if you're going to bring in companies, I would want to know what counties they work with. I mean, that's what I would want to know. Doesn't mean we want to know that. Um, I'm very concerned for the employees if you outsource too much of this. Um, I mean, even when, I remember it was as simple when the administrator first started here. Um, I said we need to sit down and talk about MERS. And he goes, oh, I understand it. I got it all. We had it at the school. Okay. We waited, I don't know, it was a month or so, and he came back, and he says, yeah, this isn't what the school system has, is it? It all sounds the same, but it wasn't. Do you, do you remember that?
Very well, very well.
And just, um, anyway, that's all I got. I'm just going to take notes as to what you do and how you proceed on this.
Commissioner West?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate the concerns, uh, Michelle. This is a budget meeting, so while you guys are having lunch, I did some research, and I took, what does it cost to outsource HR? And I Googled that. And the most conservative number I found was $100 per month, per employee, for comprehensive services. So if we take our 125, and then it went up to $1,500 a month. And it also said 40% of the first-year salary of every new employee. Now, we don't, that was just a national average. But if we did that, and this is a budget meeting, we ought to plug in about $150,000 to $300,000 to outsource human resources to solve a problem. I'll remind you that we have not yet identified. And I, I, I know we've sat in this meeting, and we've heard that there were people that had concerns. I know that I go in my community, and they say, well, the sheriff's got a concern about some past things that have happened. Anybody's got a concern, they ought to come to the table and share that with us, because I, as one commissioner, am not willing to spend $150,000 to $300,000 a year to solve a problem that doesn't exist.
Versus $10,000.
Commissioner Soder.
Yeah, after, after speaking with, with Doty and, and doing a little, I'll cover what Ty did, Googling a bit. If the board feels that more, um, HR services other than hiring and firing, which, you know, all of those are done in-house in the Health Department, and all of the complaints and issues are done in health, in-house in the Health Department. But if, if we feel there's something more that should be done, that's, that's what our administrator was suggesting, um, by expanding the duties of the current executive assistant to include some human resources duties. But if that's not enough, maybe the board considers a half-time person that reports to the administrator, if that's a compromise that might fly. But to not, once you would outsource it, I mean, the one thing with the few phone calls that I made, everybody agrees with, is it becomes impersonal. And I think, you know, Commissioner Rushton has made a very good point of gaining efficiency, but in this case, we would be duplicating exactly what, what is already provided to us by Stok, I can't get it out, Cole Stoker, and, and other, um, other folks that we call on right now. So we're not gaining efficiency. We're duplicating things that we're doing right now that are working very well. So, you know, I think, I, I can't support the idea of outsourcing HR. I think we either look at what the administrator has suggested to expand the duties, if there are additional things we want done. And, and if people feel it's too much to give it to our, our executive assistant to the administrator, then bring in a half-time person who reports to the administrator, or who reports to the executive assistant, one of the two. But then you're not creating a whole new structure when you don't need it.
Commissioner Russ?
In our prior meetings, we had suggested developing, uh, an HR department. You were opposed to that then. We suggest that we outsource. You oppose that now. You want to keep everything status quo.
Are you asking me?
No, I'm making a statement. You want to keep things status quo. You want to add, uh, you want to add, but we have a department that's split. We're trying to bring everything under one umbrella so that there's consistencies and efficiencies for HR purposes. So I guess we'll go back to looking at creating an independent finance department that would serve underneath the administrator, if you're not interested in even learning about HR or outside, outsourcing services. Like I said, there's a whole menu of things that you can do that you want to outsource, and keep some things internally. But it's like I said, it sounds like one minute you're for one thing, the next minute you're not for it, then you're for it. So it's a little bit confusing on your end, I would say.
Well, I would suggest that, that we make a motion, and if this passes, then we're going to continue on. If it doesn't, then, you know, we can move on to something else. I mean, I would, there's no sense in us continuing to argue about or discuss this if it's not going to go through, you know? So, I mean, I would, I would say, um, let's just, I would make a motion that we take a figure, we figure out an amount, and we put this in our, our budget.
I'll support that.
Take a figure for what? For HR, for the finance, you know, moving finances under the administrator, or we can do them separately. Let's say, let's do something for, we're going to have an HR, whether it's outsourced or we have it in-house, we have to do it, you know, we'll, we put this in our budget. And, and that's, that's sort of what I'm saying. Yes.
Is it possible for you to write that down for me? I just did, I had, you had it, and then a second, and then there was more. So, did you want to repeat it?
Yeah, I, I would just say that we, we've, we've put an amount in our budget, and the amounts.
To select an amount?
Uh, to be determined. For, if we're going to outsource HR and move the finances to the administrator.
No, 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 no. We don't do business this way, and this is a meeting, a committee meeting, not a regular meeting, but we're not going to have a motion on the table now to completely reorganize and take a vote now without talking to experts, without knowing the cost, without, no, this isn't the way we do business, Will. You can't do that.
That's just what we're doing here. That's what this whole agenda is about.
We're making a decision on next year's budget. You're talking about the future of this whole organization. This is not a meeting to determine the reorganization of county government. It's to come up with the budget for, for October 2021.
That's what I'm suggesting. Commissioner Lotner?
Okay, that was what I wanted to clarify. So what you're saying is, we will, to create the budget to, to outsource HR. Okay, so that, that's just, as I said earlier, we would just pick a number to put in that.
Right.
And that can come at the next, after we will hear from this company, because we haven't heard from this company. We don't know. A lot's been thrown out here, but we don't know what they.
Right, we'll do.
We also would pick that manual. Okay. We should set that up, yes, I think. Okay, my next question would be, and then you, the other part of it is move finances under the administration, under the administrator. Okay. Yes, I, okay, because I think a lot's going to come out of what we learn when we're able to interview that company. And if we have that budget set up, then if we say, well, we don't want to outsource all of it, or even some of it, then we've got the budget number we're prepared for, in case we want to keep it all in-house. All right, I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was a little confused.
No, that's okay. I just kind of want to clarify.
Mr. Elder?
Who would amend that to, instead of establish a budget, how about to establish a budget not to exceed $10,000 for determining where to place HR activities? Since we have a proposal for 10 grand.
Is that a motion?
That's, yes, suggesting that.
Okay, yeah.
I'll support that.
Well, so that would be amendment to the, the first motion. We have any discussion? Yes.
I don't believe we can vote on this motion until we know what we're talking about. I don't believe it's appropriate to talk about reorganization or going to firms. I don't think it's appropriate for individual commissioners to go out and talk to, to firms. I, I, I think we're way out of line here. And if we have a problem that we're trying to solve in this budget process, whoever it is that's got the problem sits right there and tells us what issues we're solving. Other than that, other than that, I don't know why we're doing this. I don't know why we're doing this. It is so irrelevant. Melinda, are you having problems with what I'm saying?
I guess I'm just wondering if you're speaking to the amendment. Are you speaking to the amendment that's on the floor?
I'm speaking to both the motion and the amendment, yes. I don't think either one of them are appropriate to be at this budget.
Yes.
Effective boards of government, of education, have the facts together before they make decisions. We don't have the facts together. We don't have any of the data. It was only an hour ago that, that our chair told us that the Health Department farms out the Human Resources function. Then we find out, no, it was just the writing of a policy. We don't have the, we don't have nothing. We're operating in the dark. If we want to talk about reorganization in our government, let's talk about doing it in 2024 or 2026, and we'll be prepared to do it. But for 2022, we need a budget. And for, and we have lots of requests, and we got a couple of suggestions, and we got some issues that are, that are problems, but nobody has been willing to talk about one of them. Nobody has been willing to talk about one single problem, except we know that the sheriff had a problem with the clerk's office about a credit card, and that was resolved. We got good audits, no grievances. I don't, this is inappropriate to have this at this table, and I, I, I plead with you. Let's do business the way we're supposed to do it. Let's make decisions about next year's budget. We can't make decisions about next year's budget with either one of the motions that's on the table.
The first, the first motion would be for the amendment to, to put $10,000 in, as Commissioner Elvire has, has stated.
Was it tough, like, what?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Soder's little seconded it. Is that correct? So was there any other statements about that, or questions? Commissioner Soder?
Well, I will, I will repeat everything that Commissioner Westall has said. I will say that, Commissioner Lotner, I have been very consistent, or Commissioner Rushton, I'm so sorry. I get the two mixed up, because you're both saying the same thing. Um, I, I don't think there's a problem, so therefore, I didn't think that there was a need to create a department. I don't think there's a need to outsource. That's very consistent. I said, if this board feels that there's something more that an HR person could do in-house, then look at some much smaller kind of thing, like a, a part-time or a quarter-time person, to do whatever it is you think isn't being done. But like Ty just said, I don't know what it is that isn't being done. And we just heard our clerk go through a litany of things that we have to be incredibly careful about, if we're looking at outsourcing anything that has to do with HR. So there hasn't been any complaints identified. There are no problems identified. There's no data supporting anything. And I don't see a reason to even go this way. If you want to put $10,000 in to look at what our, our administrator suggested, I will support that, but I won't support the larger issue.
Any other questions or statements? All right, so I would just take a roll call vote on the amendment.
Read it, please.
The amendment I have is motion, uh, motion to recommend the amount we determined for HR not to exceed 10,000. Correct?
Yeah, you're, yours included finance, right? So the total budgeted amount for any change would be 10,000. Because that was the only, that was the only budgeted change in our administrator's proposal, was 10,000. So total budgeted amount would be 10,000.
Is that right for the second?
Yes.
And you said roll call, right?
Please.
Commissioner Elvire?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnick?
No.
Commissioner Lotner?
No.
Commissioner Robbins?
No.
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Fails for no support. Oh, I'm sorry, five, two. Five, two.
Yes, so now we'll go back to the original motion, and could we have a roll call on that?
Read it, please.
All right, so. I have motion to recommend an amount to be determined for outsourcing HR and move finance to the administrator, seconded by Rushton.
Question on the motion?
Yes.
The chair really wants us to vote on a motion that ties our hands to a decision that we don't even know what it's going to cost, an amount to be determined? That, we can't do that. This board is going to vote, to go out, to resource, source, outsource human resources for an amount to be determined later?
And higher finance.
We can't, this is, this is not an appropriate motion for this table. And I'd like to ask the administrator to speak to that, if he would.
I mean, it's here in our things, we're having a discussion, we've got a motion, and, I mean, we don't need to bring the administrator into it at this time. We've discussed this now for three, four months.
We've never discussed voting on something without knowing what it costs, never.
Well, and that's the whole idea. Do we want to start looking at a cost? We have never even considered cost, so at this time, that's the idea, is that, are we going to go look at cost now? We've had an estimate of, what, 272,000 or something?
So to clarify, what you're saying is just to investigate, not to create?
Well, we've placed something in the budget, and then we're going to find out how much it's going to cost, if we're going to do it or not. When we come to finalize the budget-
If we're going to do it.
Yes.
Can we get clarification for the minutes? Because I am seeing, I'm seeing you going, that's right, and I'm seeing Commissioner Rushton going, no, that's not what we're saying, so.
I didn't make the motion.
I know you didn't, that's why, I want to make sure we're very clear in these minutes.
Okay.
To protect us.
So to clarify, what I'm understanding you're saying is, without money in the waters, to place in the budget for outsourcing human resources, basically a draft budget, but we don't know the amount yet. Obviously, we're going to hear from this company, choose the menu, get a price, then we'll outsource HR.
Right.
Okay. Then I think where some confusion might be is, we now have that draft budget. If we choose not to outsource, we have the budget for the independent HR department. Is that basically-
We could use it, but at least we're planning for-
We could use it, but we're planning for the basic independent HR department, independent finance department. Good. That's what I want to make sure that I'm clear on.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
One final comment. We never talked about outsourcing until quarter after nine this morning. I, I'm amazed, I'm amazed that this board wants this group of commissioners to vote on a motion that has been so irresponsibly researched. No homework, no prices, no cost, no problems identified, no goals to solve, no, nothing. I ask again, it's on the table, but it shouldn't be. And wherever, whatever you feel about human resources or what we need to do, this is an inappropriate motion to support. And it's also inappropriate at this late date in the budget process to introduce a whole new reorganizational theme into what we're doing. And it's also, Mr. Bonnick, inappropriate for you to tell me that the commissioner can't ask the administrator for an opinion on something that's at the table. He's one of the most experienced county administrators in our state, he's had experience in the school system. If I want to ask the administrator a question about something that's at the table, I darn well can do that. And you can't tell me I can't. So I'm going to ask again.
We are in discussion here with, in this, and it's our meeting, it's our meeting.
And I'm one of you seven people, and it's my meeting too-
Correct.
And I asked a question of a resource, and I want Mr. Genick to answer my question.
And first of all, this was brought up at our other meeting, this is not the first time we've discussed about it. That's how I even got involved about talking about it, it was brought up before, and to say that it was never brought up is incorrect, at least. We've talked about several different things in several different meetings, but if you insist, you ask him your question.
Well, we designed it now that if he's smart, he won't answer.
And he's smart. Bingo.
I have not been involved in any of these discussions. The only discussions I ever had about restructuring is when Mr. Bonnick and Mr. Robbins and I have been out for a while to try to call the waters out and find some common ground. So aside that, I have not been involved, I was not aware of any outsourced discussions, and so I have no knowledge, and I have no response.
Are you aware of any county government or any school system that has been successful in outsourcing the entire human resource program?
I am not aware of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elgayer.
I'm confused about this motion, because I hear you saying, we're going to create a budget that we might do something. I hear Commissioner Lautner saying, we're creating a budget to do something, so I can't vote on this yet.
Maybe I can clarify, I think what you're saying is, if this passes, you will bring this company in to give a proposal to the board, right?
Correct. And if it doesn't pass, then we won't do it. You know, we're done, and we'll just stay out. We are, I just want us to move on so that we don't keep saying the same things over and over again, as we have been at the last, at least three meetings, I would say.
As long as we're not agreeing that this is going to happen, no matter what we hear, you know? Commissioner Lautner is, her statement says it's going to happen. Yours says we're going to explore and get some information. So I need to know which I'm voting on.
Well, right, I mean, my understanding is, is that we're exploring it, and we're going to find out information and get the information that hopefully Commissioner Wessel is looking for, Commissioner Sotis Little's looking for, and then we can make an educated decision, all right?
I think, if you follow your policy, any contract that you approve, whether it's for the roof job or anything, still has to be approved by the board, and a regular-
Yeah.
So, at least in my opinion, this motion, this is a budget committee meeting. I think what you're saying is you want to put some dollar amount into the budget for this, but whether it's company A, B, C, or X, Y, Z, it's definitely part of the regular board meeting, and you have to either approve a contract, or if you bring in a personal request, that has to be approved by the board anyway.
Alan, the budget has to be approved by the board as well, in the end.
But in the end, it does, you're not saying we have to make any change.
We, right, we will make that decision at some time. Right now, I just want to see if we put it in the budget, and we can move on to these other things, put something in the budget to say, this is what we're trying to, are we going to try to accomplish this or not?
But I don't think that's the way this is going to happen, because we had a discussion in an executive board meeting, and this group agreed to wait until the budget process, and then last week, we were told, no, we agreed to do it. And if we vote for this today, I guarantee you, what we're going to hear is, we voted to do it. And so I'm with you. Voting yes on this is a dangerous thing, because we're voting to do it. Even though we have no background information, no cost information, we are making a major change today if four people vote for this. And all you got to do is look at history, and you know that's the truth. Because when Commissioner Lautner brought it up, and just, the motion was, we're going to delay it until the budget committee, then last week, we heard, this group agreed to do it. And I still say, it's irresponsible, because we don't have the background, we don't have the details. You don't vote first on a solution, and then identify the problem.
All right, so I'd call for the roll call vote on this.
Okay, we need the motion read again, please. Sorry.
No, fine, we should have to find it. Just want to make sure. I know it's, it's somewhere here. Okay, so I'm going back with what I had written the first time. Motion to recommend, this is two, but, motion to recommend an amount to be determined for outsourcing HR and move finance to the administrator. Period. Seconded by Rushton.
That's right.
That's the motion. Right? That's a permanent move.
Yeah.
That's permanent.
That's permanent.
Yeah.
Correct.
So you're making a change based on no information?
No, no, not a budget, to the organization.
To the organization, it's the way that reads.
We need the motion in writing before us to vote on this. This is a critical, this is the most important vote we've taken in this commission since I've been here, and it's got to be in writing, and we got to make sure the questions are answered. This is critical. So I'd like to take a break and get this motion ready.
Make sure it's what you want to say.
Yes. Commissioner Rushton.
Are you going to respond to his request for a break, or are we going to continue having the conversation?
Well, we, I mean, I've read, I know what it says, I'm not, I guess, and they know what it says, everybody's interpreting different, so if you want to write, have it written down, we can do that.
Same thing.
I'd like that.
We can take a break, and we'll write it down.
Do you want to go in and you can type it out for us?
Sure. End of session here.
Okay, I can send you.
And I would like to take off my first motion, because I do think that it was being misunderstood. And if that's okay with the second?
I can answer that in two ways. It appears to me that the purpose of this meeting today was to determine how much we were looking at putting in the finance and the HR department for budget. What happens if you cannot get those, that information prior to budget? Are we going to be right back at the table again?
We may be, I don't know. I mean, that's why we want to, that's why I wrote up like this, that's why I understood what I was trying to say.
So I would say no.
See why it was confusing.
I would say no.
You will not withdraw yourself?
No.
Okay, so then we'll have to vote on that motion, since it can't be withdrawn. What?
Then we need that in writing.
What's that?
The motion we're voting on in writing, then, if it's not withdrawn, we need to see what we're voting.
Okay. So can she print that motion out, the first one?
I'm going to print from here.
Okay, I'll see if Michelle can.
Okay. Do you want to pause the meeting again?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. She should be able to go ahead and read on the note.
Copy of this now, the first motion, and this is what we'd be voting on this time.
Do you want me to read it on the record? Or did you want to?
I can read it, yeah. It's a motion by Bonnick to recommend to add it to the budget, an amount to be determined for outsourcing HR and moving finance to the administrator's, administrator, and that second was by Rushton.
And then we're ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Do you want to speak, Commissioner Lautner?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to offer an amendment to your original motion, we're going to vote on right now.
Okay.
Okay. So my motion would be that where you have to recommend to add to the budget in an amount to be determined HR budget, and direct the county administrator to invite to a budget work session, a presentation on human resources services available to county government, and move finance to the administrator. That's it. And by what you just gave us?
Yes. I don't know that it's changed much, but yes.
I'll need that in writing. She wants to finagle that, and then, thank you.
Well, we don't have a second out of here.
Oh, my apologies.
Yes.
In speaking to that, I think-
Well, we don't have a second, so we're not, we don't speak to it till we-
Call the motion.
Yes. So we would have the roll call vote on the original motion?
Okay, so fails for no support.
On?
On the one that, yeah. Thank you.
So Melinda's fails for no support.
Correct.
Okay, now we're back to the roll call. All right, Chairman Bonnick?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
No.
Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Elgayer?
No.
Fails.
Okay, so then, I have written the second, the other motions that I had determined, but, and so, I don't, I was told that actually I'm supposed to give up the chair to make a motion, so the vice chair is now in charge of the meeting, and asks for me to make a motion.
Go ahead.
All right, so I move to direct the county administrator to investigate and invite to the budget work session, a presentation on human resources services that are available to the county from outside sources, I would add to that. Just to clarify it, even though I didn't say that originally.
Is there support?
I will support that.
So these are two separate motions now?
This is just one motion right here.
Okay, this one.
And I've added the words from outside sources. So then we just have a roll call vote on that.
Well.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we need a little bit more clarification on that. Anybody can walk in the room and say they're a human resources person. I think we should have a little bit more specification. It should be a, a company that has the credentials, or a person who has the credentials that specify that they are a human resources company, or a certified human resources person. We have to make sure we're, that the information that we're getting is from somebody who may be able to provide that service through their company. Does that make any sense?
It does, but I would, you know, by putting it to county administrator, I believe I would depend on him to make sure that that happens. I trust him to do that.
There is a grant charge as human resource council, and I would assume most professional companies would be part of that organization.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, through your tent, for budget purposes, which is what we're here today, because I guess I would have to argue that we're past these two positions, we're now in budget. We had a motion to move these two positions to budget, and that means to create budgets for those two positions. So I understand what you're trying to say here, to investigate, to investigate using human resources services, and I'm all in favor of that. I guess I would just have to ask you to consider amending these to say, too, because for us to move forward, we're going to need some budgets. And not necessarily, and if you really wanted to wait on moving finances to, under the county administrator, the county administrator is going to be here for part of next year, so- is going to be here for part of next year, so that's going to come, you know, after. But I would say to at least, that you, that you really need to, for our sake, start a budget. As I said, if, if we determine, well, we don't really wanna use any of the services that come before us or present or whatever, then we're going to need a budget on, on whether for a person in-house. And that may be what comes out of this. We may be really struck with a particular person who we say, we would like to ask, you know, would they like to apply for a human resources position as a county employee? So I'm thinking budget. Why are we here today? I'm thinking budget. So I'm just asking what you think about that. Do you want to wait until we meet next and create the budget for this? Hopefully, 'cause I don't know how soon these companies can come in. As I said, this is mid-August. And we're either gonna be late preparing our budget this year, or we're going to move pretty fast.
Commissioner Alguayer.
I have to comment on an assumption that Commissioner Lautner made that I do not agree with. Her statement that we voted in the motion to create these positions. The motion was to move the two proposed positions to the budget process. My clarification was, so this is to move the discussion. Her motion was extremely vague. We clarified to say discussion. So there is, there cannot be an assumption made that we passed a motion to create these positions, and so and if I would refer that issue anywhere we need it referred.
I guess this motion here to me is, I, you know, I'm saying Commissioner Wessel said we don't have any numbers, any things for the budget. If we're gonna try to get some kind of numbers, rather than, and if it's gonna be put in the budget, I think he's right. We can't just say, you know, like I had said, an amount to be determined. We gotta have a figure that we're really talking about. Then we can put it in the budget, that's my thinking, and that's what I was that's what I was thinking about when I made that first motion. So that's why I, as I was sat back and I think, I'm glad he had us be write it down, because then I get, I think we all have a better idea. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish here, is we get a number, if we're gonna do this, we know what we're talking about. Okay?
Call the question.
Well, Commissioner Lautner answers.
She's already spoken a couple times.
My motion was very clear, and my motion was not amended. Commissioner Alguayer, you can throw anything you want out there for whatever you wanna say, or whatever you think your clarification is. You did not amend my motion, and my motion stands as printed. And if all you have to read is all the discussion ahead of time, you know exactly where I was going prior to that motion, so it was not an amended motion.
I'd call it. Do we have a vote on this, please? We'll do another roll call.
Yep. Okay. Chairman Bonnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sodis Little.
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel.
No.
Commissioner Alguayer.
Yes.
Six to one.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I think that it might be preliminary on the, my, the second motion that I was talking about, so we can move that, we can move on, 'cause look at the other items that we have. So I guess, do you wanna start with the register of deeds? Right at the top here?
Yeah. I'm wondering if we could hold on that. I was invited to, to visit the register of deeds office, I'd like to do that next week. If, and maybe that's unfair, but if we can wait on that, I'd like to wait on that.
I mean, we can, but they have, for them to keep moving on with the budget, they have to make decisions, so. All right, then we go to senior services? I mean, does any, first of all, does anybody object to letting, you know, wait on register of deeds?
Yeah, to our next budget session.
Yeah. So that would be the first item on, or, I believe that's the eighteenth, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next Wednesday.
All right, then senior services. Commissioner Alguayer.
I would support, again, I believe that we need to retain our valued employees, and we need to compete with other counties. I'm very sad that we that our employees can't afford to live here. That's beyond our ability to pay the kinds of salaries that would, we have a housing problem. I realize that. But I believe we should pay our people commensurate with, with their responsibilities and their qualifications. So I would support. I think she's asking for a very reasonable change. I would support it.
Any other, Commissioner Rushton?
I asked the director a specific question, and that question was the requirements for the position. And she came to the county with that education in her resume and accepted the position at the time for the stated wage. During her tenure here, she has received, as every other employee has received, a bump in salary annually. And I think that, from what I understand, her wages are in line with other senior services directors. I will not be supporting this today.
Commissioner Wessel.
I, I do support her request. I, I don't believe in the information that we received that, that we had evidence that her wages were in line. In fact, I think whether we compare her wages to other county department heads or across the region, we need to adjust that, that, that wage, I believe. So I support it.
Commissioner Sodis Little.
I too support it. I think she's an excellent employee, very qualified, and we were fortunate that she took that job at the rate that was given, but she is out of line with her other other department heads, way out of line, and, and really underpaid, so I support it totally.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes, thank you. I, I think that you're wrong on that, because I think if you look at population and seniors served, this is right in line. You've gotta look at Leland County as it stands. We don't have the populations others do that fall under the criteria for needing the services for senior services. You have to look at these as positions and not personalities. You can't look at a department head and say, oh, we've got to retain that person. You can't be doing that in county government. You raise up one of these, you're gonna have to start raising up every one of these, because I guarantee you that if you raise up one of these, every one of these other department heads are going to say, look at what I do and how much more I do and how much more important my position is, I also need to be raised up. You can't raise this department up, up above what we pay our, our assistant prosecutor and not expect to have to raise that one. You can't be, you have to look at these as positions. We've always been able to draw talent in Leland County for a number of reasons. And one of those is our healthcare benefits. You can say all you want about it, not paying the bills, but there's been a whole lot of benefit to our employees for our healthcare services and, and their the very fact that they don't even have to pay for their healthcare up here. If that's not good enough for some employees, then I don't know what to say, because there's, nobody has these kind of benefits. Clerk was right earlier. We don't, we don't wanna rock that boat. We certainly wanna keep that package as it is. But I, I can't, I cannot raise up one of these unless you're going to do a whole wage study on all of our positions, and, and I guarantee you that that, that is going to be a mess. So Commissioner Rushton is right. Our, our director knew what this wage was when, when she took this position. I know she was very happy to get, in fact thrilled to get this position. So it's a good package. All the way around, it's a good package. It fits Leland County. And to think that we as county government are going to try to hit a wage to retain the personalities and so that they can afford to live in our county, you're forgotten who pays that. And there are a whole lot of people living on a whole lot less than these wages out there in our county, paying these wages. And, and I think that's been a forgotten component. So I will not be supporting it.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, my, my point is, is that when I look at senior services and the directors and the salaries of them, we're right in the middle. We're not low, we're not high. You know, there's four lower and there's five higher. So I, I think it's, it's, it's a fair wage for senior service's job. On top of that, we've just given her extra personnel that she hasn't had before that will actually help her do her job, you know, and make her job a little easier, I think. So I, I mean, she does a wonderful job, and I think, but I, I think for the job that we're talking about, it's a very fair wage, and we're not talking about the benefits. We're only talking about the wages themselves. And it's right in the middle, and I don't know what the populations of these are. The only one I really thought out of line was Ben Z at seventy-two thousand. You know, 'cause they have a smaller population than us. But, that, you know, so I appreciate all she does. I, I just think we gave her a tremendous boost this year in, in restructuring. And so I would say that, I, I don't, I, I think that we've already put as much in wages this year as we should for senior services. That's, so, yes.
She does have a master's, and that's not easy to get. So she's highly credentialed for this job. We did give her more staff to serve our citizens. The citizens vote overwhelmingly for this village. We did give her more staff, that means she has more responsibility. She's taking on more, more work. I find it really interesting that we're pinching pennies here while we're talking about perhaps adding a couple hundred thousand dollars with no facts. So our, our employees will hear that, that we're willing to blow a couple hundred thousand just 'cause we like some idea, but we're pinching pennies on their wages. I don't think that's a good plan.
Commissioner Wessel. We didn't, April came to us and asked for a, she made a recommendation that we compromised with her on the, on her position needs. And I'm wondering if this board might be open to looking at where she is now and what she's requested and do a little bit of a bump, because I do believe that she needs a little bit of a bump. If we can't give what she's recommending, why don't we see if we can come up with a, another figure somewhere in between?
Commissioner Sodis Little.
I, I just wanted to, to also note that two out of the four that are making less are first-year employees, so they're at the beginning of their pay grade, and she's been here, how many years?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight and a half.
Eight, eight and a half years, so just pointing that out.
But how long has she been there? The full time?
Eight and a half.
What's that? The full time?
Full time.
Commissioner Rushton.
I just would like to say that probably most every one of our employees would like a little bump. And they will stand before us and tell us exactly why they think they deserve the bump. So if we're gonna start bumping, I would suggest we look across the board and bump everybody's wages, even the little ones out there that don't have a voice as a director.
Okay, so should we just have a vote on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
I believe it fails four to, four to three. All right, so then that would, then that brings us then to the prosecuting attorney? Commissioner Lautner.
My argument stands. As I said, and this is a wage that was offered. This is a wage we feel, we've always been able to attract talent to these positions. We can't be looking at the personalities much as we would like to, much as we can appreciate what to do. We can't be looking at personalities. We have to be able to look at the position and what it takes to fulfill that position. There, as I said before, there's a tremendous healthcare package that goes along with this. It's not offered anywhere else, to my knowledge. And I can speak to that personally. The cost of healthcare. 'Cause I don't have county insurance. And it is, it is unbelievable, the cost, when you start paying out of pocket for your healthcare. I think that we, I think the prosecutor has a another route he can go within his department that does not change any of our wage tails, does not open up our wage schedule to a study. I, and I think it's a fair proposal. And I think it's a good proposal. I think that could be, this could just be amended and, and taken care of in-house. So I will not support this motion.
Will, will you clarify for me, 'cause I, I'm not sure what you're referring to?
I'm referring to the prosecutor speaking to the puzzle and moving puzzle pieces, and he does not want to do that, but that is within his ability to do within his office.
Commissioner Sodis Little.
I don't understand what Commissioner Lautner is referring to, moving the puzzle pieces. So.
So what our prosecutor has, he, we have our prosecutor, our prosecutor has a chief assistant prosecuting attorney, and he has an assistant prosecuting attorney.
He spoke this morning that it's possibility that his chief assistant prosecutor may retire, I forget his words exactly, but I'm not suggesting that. He just said that was a possibility. But our prosecutor's been before us the last several years with our assistant prosecutor, and we've heard over and over and over how great this work does, how much work he does, and if he is overworked. There is a possibility for our prosecutor to take the assistant, the chief assistant prosecuting position and put our assistant prosecutor in that position, and move our chief assistant prosecutor down to the assistant prosecutor position and solve this problem.
Thank you for that explanation. I wouldn't begin to tell our prosecutor how to staff or how to organize your staff, but I will say I'm going to support this based on not the person, although I think it's, it is a good policy to reward people, and I wouldn't be opposed to having a wage scale review countywide, because I, I think probably everybody could use a bump. But what I am saying is that I do support this, because it, clearly the work, the work, there's more work there. He's doing a masterful job, and that probably wasn't all that was in the job when he signed on. So I think, you know, the position needs to be recognized, that he's doing a lot, and he deserves that.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes, I, I wasn't in favor of this when the prosecutor came to us mid-year, and I thought we ought to move it to the budget process. We did. I think it's a compelling case. I think just the twenty-four seven services that Tristan and that position provide warrants, warrants this, and I support the prosecutor's request.
Yeah, I guess in, in my mind, I don't know about changing the wages, but I do think that we could look at on-call. We could find other ways that, that could be, there could be compensation, whether it's it's IT stuff that he does, whether it's on-call, whatever it is that, you know, that we could use. And we don't have to really look, look at wages, but make sure he's, he has extra compensation for the other extra things that he does over and above that really, I don't know that he has to do. Commissioner Law?
I had mixed feelings in regards to this initially. However, a lot of things were brought to light today in regards to this. And I, I do like the idea of compensating for those off-hours, you might say, because it sounds like it's consistent, the off-hours. So I would ask that, I would ask that the prosecuting attorney's office come back to this board, maybe with a different type of structure, something that we can support for the added time that that employee is mandated, it sounds like, to do. And see if we can work something out that way, so he gets, so his request can be considered. So I would like a little more information on that, if we could structure that in a different way. I believe they had mentioned that other counties pay, you know, a per diem or whatever for those overtime hours. So I would like to kind of take a look at that and see if the prosecutor would be open to that.
Commissioner Wilson?
I think, I defer to the administrator, but I believe there'd be some real legal issues with combining a salary position with an hourly position.
And that maybe.
So I think.
And I think you're due for one, due for anybody.
Correct.
So I think that's what you're saying.
I am, yeah.
And obviously, I'm not a attorney, but other colleagues are paying off. I assume all the terms are salary together.
Right.
And they probably get, their salary is for their services during this time period, and the weekend may be extra. I'm just guessing that's on their structure. And I'm not a attorney, and I haven't talked to Joe about this at all, but we can, we can come back.
Yeah. My thinking is, is we did this with the clerk. You know, she has the accounting as a separate thing, and we, even though she's salary, she's got a different stipend that she gets for, you know, running the.
So you're talking stipend?
It could be a stipend, it could be, you know, on-call for every twenty-four hours, something like that, that we could, we could work out. But there's an extra duty there that I think that we could compensate.
I'm sure there's a legal way to it. Commissioner Russell is correct, you can't combine hourly and salary.
Right.
But stipends, yeah, I don't know. But I think there's a way to do it. If you like, we can come back next meeting.
Commissioner Law?
Well, in light to that, I mean, in some counties, I do know that, or they used to anyway, in the prosecutor's office, they'd probably give them comp time for taking calls after hours or on the weekends. Looking at the stats here, I know, I talked to Joe the first time he came in, and he did come back with some stats, but I guess what I'd like to know is, I mean, yeah, you have cases reviewed, were they charged? Looking at this, you have three prosecutors. That's about one hundred and forty cases for each prosecutor. Your felony cases, yeah, they look good on paper, but, I mean, how many went to court? Did they play out? As far as Tristan, you know, doing all the work after hours, I think it's great, but I think you need to talk to the sheriff, too, because I think your depths may be misusing it. If that lieutenant's sleeping at night, that's what he's paid for, is take those calls in the middle of the night. So there's a chain of command. They probably should go through the lieutenant first, then go to your office. And maybe your prosecutor may not get overworked. I think he's doing a great job. I think he should be compensated something here. Like I said, I agree with Melinda, too. I think there could be some changes, but that's your, you know, that's your department. But I think there's a lot of little things here that could be looked at. And I guess next time, I'd rather see your stats and just, just these numbers here, reviewed cases. I want to know how many were charged. I mean, you may get ten cases a day, maybe only five charged, so, you know, those other five just went to file thirteen, so I'd like a better breakdown. But I am going to support it, but I'd like to see some changes between you and the sheriff department, and you and how you do your stats.
Do we have a motion? Well, I think we just need more information. I mean, I don't want to, you know, I mean, we could have, if you had a motion, I mean, I'm, we're open to it.
I had asked for more information before we make a decision on this, so I would really like to have a little bit more information.
So move it to August eighteenth?
Thank you.
Is that right? That's what you're all saying?
Yeah.
And we'll look at the, wherever they call it, and see what other colleagues are doing. Okay. Then the next is the administration restructuring proposal.
We've already.
Yeah, really, the clerk is next.
Okay.
The thing about the Parson Rex and the Amatory, those are long-term things I think you need to consider.
Yeah.
And the HR, you already have kind of dealt with it, so that kind of, I think, covers mine.
Okay.
And I think you're going to look at the administrative duties down the road, too, so I don't have anything specific.
So, anything about the clerk?
I move that we support the clerk's request for additional persons to film to cover county clerk's office duties and the clerk's side.
Support.
Any questions or suggestions?
So a clarification on that position, Michelle. I think you told this board that you needed this clerk specifically for elections. Was that what you said?
Elections, court, all.
Elections.
Court, helping training, vitals. It would be, it would know all aspects of the office, not Singleton, but they would be helping a lot with court, with elections, another person to take minutes. They would be fully, I want them, another person to be fully across the board and trained.
So basically, non-financed responsibilities in your office.
It's not, I mean, it's not.
Right.
Just saying, non-financed, everything in your office.
Yeah, I, there was some discussion about elections and the heavy burden of court and minutes. So that's what I was wondering, if they were going to be specifically trained, you know, and targeted to court, elections. Yeah.
What I do for the board contract. Eventually, I think, but those would be the main focuses, especially going into a big election year like next year.
And I, looking at an entry-level clerk?
I was looking at the one that was, it was, it was a union position. I was looking at the same place where the administrative legal secretary falls.
Well.
The chair. I was not looking for a two.
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted to have a conversation about. That's why I asked the question, if this person would be, would function interchangeably with your current deputy as far as duties? Or is this a person that's going to interact with your general staff?
Not, not with those two for finance, but not more of my general staff. This person would not have hiring and firing powers, that's why it can be in the union. But I need something more than a two to attract the person with the skills and the willingness to do what this requires.
And the authority that this person would have?
No, no hiring and firing. Authority to direct staff, help staff, but hiring and firing for any elected official is vested with, of course, the elected official or in their absence, their chief or undersheriff.
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, I am a little concerned about hiring a person in, in your department at that level. You have, currently have a deputy?
I do. Chief. I have three deputies. I have two account clerks, and I have a chief deputy.
Well, I guess that's what I was referring to, the chief deputy.
Correct.
How do these wages compare to your chief deputy?
The chief deputy clerk has a starting pay of twenty-two oh five to twenty-eight seventy-five. I think you should, you may have this in your budget book, but I don't know which tab it's under.
It's under supplemental information.
Do you know the page?
It's in the back.
Starts with, I don't have any wages. So, yeah, it's a few pages back from the end. But because this is a union position, you have to defer to the Teamsters pay scale, which I think is also in here. What I don't think we have in here is what positions fall within each step of one, two, three, four, five. Pay grade four starts at nineteen eighteen, and goes up to twenty-five fifty-two.
What page is in it? It's in the supplemental, you said?
It's in the supplemental, I see one. It's four pages from the very back for the Teamsters wage schedule, and then the non-union wage schedule that has, department has, non-union elected officials and court employees is the page before that.
Michelle, what were you requesting grade wise?
My request went in as pay grade four on the Teamsters wage schedule.
Okay.
Starting wage?
Nineteen eighteen.
Is that, is that what you're proposing to us, starting wage?
Yes, yes. It wasn't year one or two or three. Which is also really comparable to the juvenile registrar that we work with a lot with court. That's on the non-union pay scale.
Wish you luck.
Thank you. So, other than yourself and your deputy, you have three account clerks?
No. I have two account clerks, the two account clerks.
I mean, I guess not account clerks. You have three deputies.
Three deputy clerks.
Three deputy clerks, okay. Have you had other, more than that in the past? Because I thought your office, one time you had four deputy clerks. No. So it was always your chief, and then three?
I had previously, way back in sixteen, I had a chief deputy county clerk with three deputies.
Okay.
And then, on the financial side, I had a chief staff accountant and an account clerk. And then we moved to one chief deputy, combined the two, and brought in a second account clerk, so now I have two account clerks. But this side stayed at three.
Okay.
I don't think we've ever.
All right. It just seems like there was more at one time, but maybe you're using some floaters or something that I.
Definitely floaters.
I think what you think actually was less, because one lady quit, and for a while you had a vacancy for bringing in floaters.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to picture faces and names, and I was thinking at one time there was more. I'm thinking floaters. So I know you've needed more than three in the past, is where I'm going with that. So with this position, by creating this position, do you think that's going to help you retain that person, that position, I should say, that position longer within your office and not, will it help stop the rotating of your other deputy clerk's?
Court work and for the elections and the minute-taking, there is no doubt. I mean, that is my hope, and I would see now why, based on when I talk to the employees when they transfer.
Any other questions? Commissioner Roberts?
So, you're saying this person's going to be doing circuit court and elections?
With me, yes.
With you, okay. So when they're not doing that, are they going to be helping out the rest of the staff?
The staff, meaning first, desk, marriages, DD two fourteen, CPL, all of that, yes.
Okay. Is there, I don't know, shouldn't even ask us. I mean, is there someone inside that you could promote up to that position, or considering?
No one has approached me, nor have I approached anyone.
Okay. I know, I was just wondering if we promoted with N and then just hired, then hired an entry level.
A level, a level four is going to be attractive to a two or a three.
Yeah.
I mean, the job would be posted.
It has to be by union, I have to, to do that, but I do both at the same time.
I mean, I just don't want to go outside if we got somebody inside that would like.
Oh, correct, correct.
All jobs are posted internally.
Okay.
So people have the opportunity.
Sometimes we do them together just to keep the process moving.
Okay.
But I haven't had internal at a level two.
Thanks.
Commissioner Soderst.
Just on the record, I support this.
Okay, well, we're ready to vote here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you. All right. So then, then that would bring us to, you did information already, so we're on future budget?
Well, Parson Rex, would you like them to come in and talk about their budget requests for next year? We kind of glanced over that. I don't, you have two members here, Parson Rex here.
When's the next person leaving?
That afternoon of the eighteenth. So I would move it back to the next one after the eighteenth. I think we should talk about it at budget, at Parson Rex first, and have, prepare a.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So does everybody have their calendars on?
Yes.
So we have one on August eighteenth.
Right.
And I believe that's at nine, is it nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And we, I think you mentioned the other day that the thirtieth was not workable.
Patricia cannot make up that.
Can we hold the whole day, or can we get a half? No, I'm going to need the whole day.
Right. So, what about the thirty-first? Is that a bad day?
I have airport boarding.
I'm good.
I can do a half-day in the morning, as long as I'm out of here by twelve-thirty.
I can do a half-day.
Let's do thirty-first, and we'll just do a half-day.
Nine o'clock?
Yes, nine o'clock.
August thirty-first at nine AM.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of agenda items for next meeting on the eighteenth, I have arrest of deeds, the prosecuting attorney, Parson Rex will be on August thirty-first. Some other issues that we have not discussed yet, and these are not in specific order, is contract negotiations, the HVAC project in this building, the software request, the sheriff's vote, and the sheriff's jail contract. Parson Rex, we already talked about that. And then some other, more minor ones, middle of clean water, if you want them in even, solid waste for the cameras, and website design. Going into some issues.
Treasure?
That was a software, right?
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Soderst.
And I had one that I want to talk with the clerk about first. She deals with our first group of employees, who I've been asked, in fact, I think I mentioned it to you, Mr. Chairman, so I'll get the proper wording and make sure that we, you and our administrator have it.
administrator have it.
I'm sorry, because she's, the former employee, exactly, she's talking about some kind of a stipend or something for help, or.
All the retirees?
Yes.
Retirees, college.
College level employees?
Yeah, yeah.
So, how long do you plan on meeting on the 18th, is the question, because that will determine how many people we set up.
I have till, oh, I have parks at 3:00 o'clock that day, so I think we had to, till 2:30.
Okay. All right, just try and plan, and then I will contact some HR companies to see, I'm not sure they come on 18th, but I'll try to get them here in August.
Yeah, good.
We did have a, we had a presentation on MERS, but we never, we never plugged any numbers in, and at one of our upcoming sessions, I'd like, why don't we still plug in some numbers?
We did plug, 250,000.
Yeah, 250,000.
But we had talked, at least, I had talked about boosting that some.
What, we normally have that kind of waited till the last budget meeting to talk about that, to see where the budgets are, because that number you can adjust at any time, so we can.
Do it at the end of the year.
What I was suggesting is that becomes a priority, and you do that toward the beginning. I really would like to see us try to get up to 90 percent. So instead of 250,000, we're probably talking triple that.
And it could be, and I don't know, because the MERS conference coming up, we could be there without putting any other tube, because the investments have been fairly good this year, so it's hard to say.
And that's the problem, you know, when you're talking MERS, it depends on that percentage, the 8 percent or whatever.
Also, what about the HR? If we can get some.
Yeah, I kind of mentioned it, I just don't know what date.
Right.
But I'll call them, yeah, yeah. So for the 18th, we'll definitely have registered deeds, prosecuting attorneys, and I think the big ticket items are the sheriff's vote and jail contract, HVAC, and once again, this is if they're available to come in, our engineers. They did do some updated numbers for me. At the end of discussion, because we can squeeze it anytime, I'd like to go in a closed session and talk about contract negotiations and salaries and compensation, because we need to have that discussion, because that would have been a major issue. And then the treasure software, those are pretty big ticket items. I think they'll take some time.
Right.
And I think that'll be a full agenda right there.
Commissioner, Michelle?
Yes.
The automation.
Yeah.
Because he was operating on a different year.
And yours is more current.
I don't think we have any.
I get.
Or is that where she's reporting?
I haven't looked at it.
She's using that for the things that she's.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Can you get to damn?
Yeah, they're supposed to, yeah, I don't know when was, yeah, but yes, thank you.
One's probably.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
So I think it's a pretty full agenda for the 18th.
Yes. Especially if it's going to be done by 2:30.
Yeah. So, we're doing public comments, and then commissioner comments?
We have public comment right now. If we're done discussing this with future dates and stuff.
Okay.
So that would be public comment. All right, then we have commissioner comment? Oh, go ahead, please come forward.
My name's Randall McHale, I'm here in.
Yeah, so you can come up, there's a speaker here, so we can.
Thank you. This is not rehearsed, and I really don't know what I'm going to say. So, thank you for letting me talk. I'll keep it three minutes or less, right?
Yeah.
Where are you from? Yeah, I won't go over three. All right, Randall McHale, I was born in Grand Haven, Michigan, I have a few friends up here in Lelandon, I'm here every summer for five months. My last years have been studying with Tony Robbins and Russell Brunson, who's made 500 million in online marketing, okay, and they make it from people like me. I've met your undersheriff, incredibly great guy, and I think I've met the sheriff, incredibly great guy. What seems to follow me, sad but true, is a rumor mill of people trying to get me locked up for a crime I never did 20 years ago in Colorado. These are the kind of things that eventually make it to the prosecutor's office. I'm also, grew up with Chuck Gomery Clarence's older brother, so there's many people sniping at me from many different directions, and it comes usually from allegations that I intentionally hurt somebody, which I never did. And so, I'm just trying to be as cordial to the sheriff's department as possible while I make my money in working with Tony Robbins and Russell Brunson in online marketing, however else I do. There's only so much I can control, I'm incredibly optimist about how we can heal COVID and other things, because I'm a healer, I work in healing arts with people, and I just want to present myself as a helper to your community, and I really liked the administrator when I first met him. So I'm just presenting that, rather than be a problem for this community because of gossip, criticism, and slander, which there seems to be an abundance of in this country, I would like to help the commissioners cut that stuff off, or at least, you know, this wastes tremendous amounts of time to the deputies and prosecutor. So, it's your counting, and I'm here to be helpful, and that's all I got. I'll leave you my number, I'll leave it with the sheriff's department, they got it. That was under three minutes, and I'm proud of myself for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I think you can feel my sincerity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner comments?
I have to comment. Our senior services discussion, I'm looking at our wage schedule, and just, just, oh, by the way, everybody, a woman with a master's has the lowest starting salary in our department. She has a master's degree. They have a million-dollar budget, which they didn't have at the inception of this And we are hanging tough on underpaying the position. And just, just, oh, by the way, it is a position usually filled by females. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, I will, I'd say that we are adjourned.